Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the Monday, November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two regular meeting to order, and I'm glad everybody got here safely with this new kind of weather that we're dealing with. Welcome. At this point in time, roll call.
John Krieger.
Here.
Pat McKee.
Here.
Cody Nicolai.
Here.
Joanna Reyes.
Here.
Corey Sillers.
Here.
Lance Trollope.
Here.
Karen Vandenberg.
Here.
Lee Webster.
Here.
Jim Boucher.
Here. We could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It is the mission of the Wausau School District to advocate, to advance student learning, achievement, and success. And with that, we're going to be giving a commendation tonight, and we're going to deal with that right now. We're pretty excited about that opportunity to, to bring people together that have already done great things for the Wausau School District and our students. So with that, all year long, nominations are open for board resolution of commendation. It recognizes students, staff, who have brought honor upon themselves into the district through outstanding achievement and/or community service. Jennifer Moore, a library media specialist at Hewitt Texas Elementary School and Thomas Jefferson Elementary, and Tanya Strandberg-Bauer, a library media specialist at Grant Elementary School and John Marshall Elementary School, have received the nationally recognized PBS Media Literacy Educator Certification. And they are nominated tonight to receive the board resolution of commendation. To gain certification, both earned eight micro credentials demonstrating expertise and dedication to teaching students to produce media that matters and to think critically about their role as media consumers. Each received a certificate from PBS, a badge that can be included in their professional and social media profiles and email signature, as well as future opportunities to collaborate with PBS Wisconsin Education. Congratulations, Jennifer and Tanya. And that's, that's an applause. That's an applause. And at this time, I'm going to do this separately. I'm going to seek a motion to approve Jennifer Moore to receive a resolution of commendation. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? The ayes carry it. Motion approved. We probably should. Probably should.
Congratulations. I'll let you hang after that. How's that?
Thank you. Well done. Anything media I like. Congratulations. Thank you very much. That's an opportunity we always wanted to make sure we take because of the great success you have had. We can share that with you. Thank you. All right. Agenda item number seven, public and student comment. With that, I would like to recognize speakers and students who wish to make public comments, but before we do, here are a couple of reminders. The board recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on public matters. Please identify yourself by name and state your address. Each statement made by a participant shall be limited to three minutes in duration, and Ms. Peck will be timing to your left or right. Speaker shall direct all comments to the board and not to staff or other participants. Public comments may not identify specific personnel or students by name or through the use of sufficiently detailed description so as to identify the individual staff or student. With that, our first person is Savannah Hoffmeister.
You have a seat.
Up here, and I believe the mic is on.
Yes. Hi, my name is Savannah Hoffmeister. I live at twelve oh one Keller Drive. I'm here to talk about an issue with the bus company, First Student. I hope you guys have had time to read my emails. John, I believe you did. The problem is that First Student refuses to drive down my road, Keller Drive and North Twelve Ave, to pick up the kids at the end of their driveways. Scott Anderson at First Student has claimed that these roads are not safe for the school bus to travel on. We live on a dead-end gravel road that has a large cul-de-sac that the bus can turn around in. The condition of the road is standard for gravel road, just like any other road that I've driven down that's gravel. There's approximately thirteen children on our road between five different houses. The bus company has determined that the bus stop be at the intersection between Keller and Twenty-Eighth, which is one mile from my house, and farther for other children. So if we're walking, that's just too far. This is an unsafe spot for parents to take their children to the bus stop. There's a, it's a T-intersection, so the parents have to U or Y turn in the middle of oncoming traffic. I have voiced these issues to Scott and the Village of Maine board members. Scott told me through email that he had safety inspectors reveal the road, and they deemed the road unsafe. When I asked him, asked him what exactly was unsafe and to please show me the safety report, he quit responding to my emails. The Village of Maine president, Betty Honish, was shocked to hear about this decision since the bus has always come down our road in the past. She has tried emailing and calling Scott, resulting in little to no answers. With no safety report, the village can't help solve the problem because as far as they and everyone else is concerned, the road is perfectly safe and managed well. The last email Scott sent to Betty said that the reasoning is due to driver refusal, and he did not mention the road condition at all. Two drivers had told me that they had no issue coming down the road, but they were not allowed to. To me, it seems that he is changing his story to back up his decision instead of simply just changing his mind. What I need from the school board is to help me and other parents achieve our goal of having our children picked up and dropped off at the end of their driveways. If, for whatever reason, it is a safety issue, I need to know what it is so that the village can help fix it. I want to know why the bus has come down our road for thirty-plus years and now refuses. The bus came down two years ago with no problem at all. Sorry. I also want to know why and how a bus company can be so unreliable and cancel bus routes randomly and frequently. Four times now, my child's bus has been canceled to bring her home from school. I should be able to feel safe in knowing that my child is going to make it home from school safely every day. First Student clearly has some internal issues, but those need to be put aside, and they need to start putting our children and our families first. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Next on the list, Rob Hughes.
Okay. All right. Okay. All right. Hello. My name is Rob Hughes. I've been a teacher in the district for twenty-three years. I've been very blessed. Never dreamed that I would have these opportunities. When I grew up, we were poor. We were in low-income housing. And a couple of years, people brought food and Christmas presents to our house, and it was always on my heart to give back. And so, seven years ago, I started a turkey drive and a ham drive. And at first, I was told no, and I get it because I was told there's a lot of other fundraisers going on, and you're, you know, you're, you're going to ask for money, and, and people are going to trust that you're going to, you know. And then the teachers' union actually said, well, we're going to, we'll support you. And now we're, seven years later, and we're at twenty-four Wausau DC Everest schools, Women's Community Center, Neighbor's Place, Salvation Army. And basically, what I do is, I ask, first I start, I ask the schools, what do you need? And it's really just a faith project because then I ask my friends to give money, and then I ask teachers to give money, and community members, and, and really, the whole project is strangers helping strangers, just like when I was young. It's really beautiful thing. This year, I was very blessed, many reasons. We raised, when I say we, anybody who donated, I think your, I think your family donated, and I know other people have donated, and I see people in the crowd that have donated. And when I say we, anybody who donated, you're part of this we. And we've raised seventeen thousand dollars, and we're going to buy almost a thousand hams and turkeys. And this Thursday, from two-thirty to five-thirty, we're going to, the schools are going to come and pick them up. And those are really the angels because they're doing what people did for me. And I come tonight also, really, the reason I saw the email and I saw the thing, I'm sorry to get back to you. You emailed Friday. How's it going? And it's things like that. Every year, I say, oh, man, it's really stressful. Can I pay this bill to my wife? I'm like, I don't know. Started out slow this year. And, but it's like when you send out the email, and it gives me credibility, and it's not just somebody you're, you trust the guy because you're backed by somebody. And, and I keep telling my wife, too, at the end of every year, I say, as long as people contribute or are willing to support it, I'll keep organizing it. This is a really good, it's a good thing, of course, and I've just been really blessed, and I'm very thankful. And in the past, I know a lot of, a lot of people have donated, and it's just a neat thing. So I'm here to say thank you for backing me because it's things like that that inspire me to keep going. And then, just in closing, K-Tech did a huge raffle, Peyton's Proms kicked in a whole bunch, DC Everest kicked in a couple grand. So it really is, it's hard to walk away, and I, and just really quick, if I could just finish. And I was talking to my buddy this week, and I said, every year, I say, I don't know if I'm doing this again. And then he said, you know, surround yourself with people who make you better, who challenge you to be better. Because he said, Rob, if you don't do it, it might, it's probably not going to happen. So just thank you, and thank you to people who contributed, and I appreciate it, and thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Greatly appreciate that. And notice it stayed on one for a long time because we wanted to hear everything you had to say. So thank you. Next on the agenda, we have Tony Gonzalez.
Hello. Well, good evening, everybody. I really kind of signed up by accident because I thought it was a comments after you guys. This is the first time I come to one of these board meetings, but I guess I'll take the opportunity to thank the board and the school for the opportunity that they're giving me to be here, not just as Tony Gonzalez, but representing the Hispanic community. I think this outreach is huge, so we can really make some progress, both for our community and for the Hispanic community and the community in general. So might as well take this opportunity. I guess the instructions were in Spanish, so I messed them up. No, just kidding. Yeah, to really thank and really tell you that there's a community out there that is really looking to integrate and get more involved with the school. And I feel honored to be a part of representing them and knowing this board and knowing the interest that has been really shown to make sure that everybody is involved in any process that we're going forth here with the Wausau School District. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Tony. Knowing you for years, Tony, I know you have, everybody has in your heart, you'd like to give back. Thank you. Thank you, people, for speaking to us. We appreciate that. Agenda item number eight, we're going to move on into approving, approving the consent agenda of appointments, separations, leaves of absence, retirements, minutes, payment bills, and donations, and specifically, the donations this month. The Incredible Bank, 3M, QuickTrip, Shu Zhong, an anonymous donor, Knights of Columbus, Maine Lions, the Mathias Family, Wisconsin State Council, Knights of Columbus, UMR, Cheryl Jones with Forest Park Village, and Wendy Murgendahl. I'm seeking a motion to approve the consent agenda with great gratitude for donations to the district. So moved. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Old and recurring business. Student demographic report was given to us in October at the October Education Operations Committee meeting. John Udine presented the two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three student demographic report. Is there any additional items, Dr. Hiltz, to this?
Nothing to add, unless there's questions.
Any questions to follow up on what was told to us at that time? If not, we'll continue to move on. Item number two, legal expense summary for first quarter. At the October Education Operations Committee meeting, Chief Finance and Business Services Officer Bob Test presented a summary report presenting all legal counsel expenses incurred during the first quarter of two thousand and twenty-two and two thousand and twenty-three. The report is broken down by law firm and by type of legal advice sought. This is a written report that requires no action. And is there anything to add to that, Mr. Test? If not, I'll continue on to number three. Referendum bidding process update. At the October Education Operations Committee meeting, Chief Finance and Business Services Officer Bob Test and Nexus Site Project Manager Nick Anderson reviewed the design approval and bidding process that was agreed to, using Stettin Elementary as an example. Added to the presentation for the November board meeting is a slide towards the end that previews, previews the budget summary report. So with that, I'll turn it over to you, and then I believe from the board perspective, there will be some questions.
Thank you. Typically, when we bring things to the Education Operations Committee, that's when the thorough discussion happens, and when we bring it to the full board, it goes pretty quickly. The demographic report, the legal summary are examples of that. This particular agenda item is a little bit different, and this slide is the new one that I inserted. A couple of weeks ago, when I was here, I shared with you that in December, you're going to start to routinely see budget updates and some more pictures of some of the action happening at some of our buildings. So what you see here, this was in Board Book last week, so maybe you reviewed it already, but you're going to see an original budget in gray, and many of those numbers stayed gray because we really haven't started the design work. Some of those numbers develop, and they change a little bit when we start doing the actual design work. Now, the gray numbers are based on square footage, conceptual designs that we shared during the referendum. During the process of the referendum, a lot of times, you don't have the energy, the time, the resources, the money to do full-on designs. So we were really limited on what we can budget for, for those buildings because they're just not as developed. And then, once we start the development process and the design, sometimes the design changes a little bit, and in this case, inflation really started to heat up after our referendum question was solidified in January. If we go with the twelve months preceding, when the referendum question was established, the CPI was four point six nine percent. We knew inflation was steep. The four months preceding, when the referendum question was established, it was six point three six percent. We knew it was getting steeper. The one month preceding, when the referendum question was established, it was at seven point zero four percent, pretty steep, but nothing compared to the ten months since then. Ten months since then, the average has been eight and a quarter. So we knew inflation was running hot. We prepared for inflation running hot, but we were not prepared for inflation to run this hot. Furthermore, the design changed. If we look at the school forest in particular, four point two four three million dollars for the school forest. If we went to Nexus and Somerville in our design committee, in our design team, and we said, we want a school forest for four point two four three million dollars, our designers could have certainly accommodated that. We could have come up with a design for exactly that amount, not to exceed. It starts to get more expensive when the end users get involved. When we have meeting after meeting after meeting, and I think when we went to ninety-five percent, we showed you at that point, we had eight different meetings with the end users. And the end users, they have budget in mind as well. Designers certainly have budget in mind. I definitely have budget in mind with everything I do here. But the end users start to look at that possibility of that environmental learning center of what it, as what it could be. And we have to compromise budget along with what the end users need out of that building. And we understand that the whole portfolio of work is still one hundred nineteen point eight million dollars, and we cannot go beyond that under any circumstances. Until you add in interest earnings, so now that portfolio becomes one hundred twenty-four million. So no matter how we slice these different projects, we need to stay within one hundred twenty-four million. And some of them are over, and some of them are under, and a couple of them are over right now, but still not over when you consider the interest earnings. So here's a report that is still in development. It'll certainly get taller. The district-wide component will probably be broken up into a couple of different bid packages. East High School, for example, is going to be split in two for sure, East High School and East High School Athletics. West High School on the bottom will also be split in two in the same way. If we bid out any of the larger projects in multiple bid packages, they might also be split up. But you'll see that same code. You'll see a gray preliminary budget. You'll see a green as designed budget, and then between green and orange, we take advantage of the open market and the bidding process. And overall, that helps us because contractors are submitting bids, knowing that others are submitting bids, competing for that same work. So then you'll see an orange number, and that one's pretty final, with the exception of some district-purchased items that might fall in there. So in terms of managing the whole portfolio to one nineteen point eight, that bottom-right yellow number might be the most important one. That's when we consider all the grays. Some of them have turned to orange, four point two million dollars in interest earnings, still under budget by about two million dollars. Okay? So we're accessing some of that four point two million in interest earnings. When we start to get some larger projects, West and Meere in particular, we have some flexibility in those larger projects, and we also benefit from scale to a certain degree, where we're hoping for some really good bids to come in, and also some flexibility to maybe modify that design. So this is a new slide. Usually, at the board level, we don't talk much about this, but this is a new slide, so I felt compelled to bring it up, not for action necessarily. Currently being designed right now, you're going to start to see some color coming on for Hawthorne Hills in this order, then East Athletics, West Athletics, John Meere, and West High School. Other than that, the rest of the slide deck is the same. You might have also thought of some questions since the last meeting, so I brought Larry Siler along with me. And of course, Dr. Hiltz is here, too. He's been involved in a lot of this. I don't know if anybody else in the crowd has been in the design meetings, but that's it for my prepared remarks.
I open up the questions from the board.
I've got a couple. President Boucher. Bob, when I'm looking at those, those numbers, the course to school forest, one jumps out. From original budget to bid budget, we're twenty-nine percent over right out of the gate, and we're saying that, or what I'm hearing is that that is end-user impact as they've gotten involved in the design?
From gray to green, yes. The users, a lot of them, develop the design of the building. We have professional help. We have Somerville, and we have Nexus in particular, and some other site designers and some other engineers. So from gray to green, it was a little bit of inflation, but what we wanted the building to be, okay? And end users drive what we want the building to be. Nexus doesn't drive it. Somerville doesn't design it. The end users that are in on the design team want to have this in the building, or they want to have that in the building. To be honest, during that process, we also constricted the square footage in some cases. I know John Meere comes to mind right away. John Meere, we took away some square footage in order to make it affordable, but in spite of that, John Meere may still come in over thirty-four point seven million dollars because of inflation, some other things that we had to have in the building. From green to orange, then it's purely just the open market and the competition that drive that increase.
So how do we get visibility into those, those end-user requests or requirements that drove the eight hundred thousand dollar delta between gray and green?
Good question. Dr. Hiltz and I talked about that at length today, and we are fortunate to have a couple big projects that are being developed right now and being designed, and somehow inviting you into that conversation to see what happens at John Meere as an example right now.
Well, no, I'm sorry. I didn't phrase that right. For school forest specifically, four point two to five million dollars, five forty, five million forty-three thousand is about eight hundred grand. Can we get a list, one through seven, here's the end-user request that drove the eight hundred thousand dollar increase?
That would probably be pretty easy to come up with, and I can start with the basement.
That's fine. If you, if you want to send it to us, that, that's great. But somehow, my opinion, and President Boucher, I don't want to overstep this, but somehow, we need to get visibility into these things and have some type of approval authority. I mean, you're talking almost a million dollars right out of the gate without inflation. And, and I get, end users are going to have, have requests, and this is maybe a good exercise for us to go through sooner than later, but for anybody that's built a house or built anything, you, my wife had different requests than I did, right? And you have to work back and forth, so not everything makes it in the finals. Somebody has to have a, I don't want to say a veto authority, but there has to be some visibility. Yeah.
Yeah, I, I share that concern. I have two concerns. One is that whenever we discuss it, I think it's important to point out what you did, Bob, is that we are restricted to a certain dollar amount. So if anybody's listening, sometimes I think people get the impression that we're talking about spending more than what we asked for, but we can't. So we're restricted. But the concern that I have that, that Pat is discussing, that I agree with, is I don't want to run into a situation where the first ten projects get to add in what they want, and the last ten projects are the ones that have to cut back. If we're seeing that due to inflation, we have to cut back, I'd rather spread that out over twenty projects instead of go over on ten and then cut back on the other ten. I know we've got wiggle room. I know we've got interests. I know we've got contingency, so we have room. It's not like we're in any position where we got to panic or anything, but I don't think we want this trend to continue, and if we use up all of our contingency and all of our interest on the first projects, then we have nothing left for the later projects.
Here's something that I think could really do exactly what you're saying, and I apologize for not doing it with the school forest any sooner, but when we met a couple of Mondays ago, I believe, we talked about at ninety-five percent, because at fifty percent, you don't take action necessarily, but at ninety-five percent, you do. At ninety-five percent, we will have that green number, and at ninety-five percent, you'll see that green number, and at that point, we're going to do it retroactively with the ones that are already green. But at that point, we're going to bring to you not only the difference between original budget and design budget, but what caused that difference. And there might be an inflationary component to it, but it's not going to be all inflationary. It's going to be, we added a basement, we did some grading to prepare for an amphitheater outside that's going to be donated by a third party. We did some other things that caused it to go up, and then you'll know that when you vote to send it to bid. My apologies for not bringing that to you earlier for the school forest. We brought it up as part of the Riverview discussion, as a matter of fact, because the Riverview one did end up going up quite a bit, not from gray to green necessarily, from green to orange, because we got some bidding anomalies because it was a smaller project and some other things. So I think going forward, we've got a process that's going to do that retroactively. I think we can pull together some list of, and some dollar amounts for what has caused those green ones to go over. And then the light green one up there, I can't forget about that one. Let's remember to mention that before we move on, but I want to address any questions.
And quite honestly, through that process, I mean, I don't know that it's necessarily fair to pit you against all the other administrators, right? You're being the guy that says, we want these ten other things, and Bob's like, no, you can't have any of those. Part of our job is to be the bad guy in that equation, right? I mean, you have to work with everybody, so do we, but at the end of the day, we're the ones that are accountable for this. So I would have no problem, the board, assuming that, that role, if and when it's needed.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that because when I tell people, you know, I don't know if this is going to pass the board's muster, you know, that can, that can help me in my dream-killing capacity, so.
Well, I think it's very important.
And then you'll know that when you vote to send it to bid. My apologies for not bringing that to you earlier for the school forest. We brought it up as part of the River View discussion, as a matter of fact, because the River View one did end up going up quite a bit. Not from gray to green necessarily, from green to orange, because we got some bidding anomalies, because it was a smaller project and some other things. So I think going forward, we've got a process that's going to do that. Retroactively, I think we can pull together some list of, and some dollar amounts for what has caused those green ones to go over. And then the light green one up there, I can't forget about that one. Let's remember to mention that before we move on, but I want to address any questions.
And quite honestly, through that process, I mean, I don't know that it's necessarily fair to pit you against all the other administrators, right? You're being the guy that says, "We want these 10 other things," and Bob's like, "No, you can't have any of those." Part of our job is to be the bad guy in that equation, right? I mean, you have to work with everybody, so do we. But at the end of the day, we're the ones that are accountable for this. So I would have no problem, the board, assuming that role if and when it's needed.
Yeah, I appreciate that, because when I tell people, you know, "I don't know if this is going to pass the board's muster," you know, that can help me in my...
Right.
...dream-killing capacity, so...
Well, I think it's very important, Bob, that you, and everybody knows, the lanes that we are all in. You know, we don't want to be saying no at the end. We probably should have been much aware of it at the beginning. And as Lance pointed out, I think that's our biggest concern, is that as we, as things increase right now, and you're looking at CPI going from 6.1 now up to 8 and 1/4, I mean, we're at that point where we couldn't really get nailed at the end and wouldn't be able to do what we want to do at that time. And going back to what Pat had said, the needs, you know, what's a need, what's not? What's a want? I had a heck of a lot of wants when I built my house, and the reality of the dollar set in, so... Other questions?
Well, I just have a comment. I think also to know what the end user impact on the price is, if we have constituents that are asking us why that difference, we want to have answers for them, because we do answer to them. So I would also like to see more information on that, just because watching the county board, they're nitpicking every dollar incentive, trying to cut that spending. So for us, I'd like to have answers when I am asked, "Why is that such a large dollar amount?"
Understood.
Thank you.
Since I, excuse me, so the families realize, I started asking questions about this five weeks ago. And staff has been very accommodating. They've explained extra things they will be sharing with the board members this evening. The board members are... Have similar views as I do, is what I'm hearing this evening, which I appreciate as well. If I were, as President Boucher said, if, you know, if you were doing something at your house, your pocketbook drives this. And this is a public money pocketbook. And sometimes, my personal feeling is that that changes how things get spent, and that is unacceptable to me. And so I have been questioning the amounts. Inflation is terrible. The prices of construction materials are ridiculous. There is a labor shortage in construction. All these things are going to affect each of our columns. But as Mr. Test pointed out, the end user has been, seems to be, a very big driver in this. And so it is our job to manage those expectations of what you're going to get. And pretty much everybody in this room understands that we want to maximize our funds in order to give the student the most, right? At the end of the day, there are a whole bunch of design features that were explained to me and shared that are phenomenal for the students, okay? But from my personal viewpoint, I think we could have managed to give them all those phenomenal things, or 90% of them, in a little bit different package. But it is where it is, and everybody's expressing that we will get some more detail, which is good as we go forward, and make sure that we're not overstepping our 119.9 at the end of the day. So, thank you.
Just to clarify, sorry not to beat a horse here, but just to clarify again, we can't. So when you mentioned public spending, that is an issue with other entities of government who can just frankly spend and just borrow money and spend, and we can't. We're at a revenue cap. We can only spend what was approved for the referendum. So our issue is not whether or not we're going to spend more than what the public authorized, because we couldn't even if we wanted to. Our issue is if we go over a dollar on project number one, then we got to go under a dollar on a different project on this list. So it's not an issue of public money or us going over that amount, because we couldn't go over it if we wanted to go over it.
Agreed.
Jim, just one clarifying question. I didn't want to imply, for the school forest, using that as an example. I did not want to imply, and I hope I didn't, that whoever has been involved in that design, this is not intentional. This is nobody's fault. There hasn't been anything done wrong. It's just the nature of the process. And I think we recognize that. I just, I want to say that out loud, so people don't walk out of here saying, oh, you know...
We understand that. It's certainly, that's a perfect example, though. The school forest is the perfect example up there, in my opinion, so...
Well, it's also been hanging out there for how many years? Eight, 10 years? So there's been all kinds of ideas percolating for a long time.
The light green one, it's turning dark green. It's right now a light green. We're in the middle of the design process. And in the middle of the design process, we're looking at, I don't have the floor plan up there, but in the southwest corner of the building, there's an addition. And it's pupil services, and it's the front office addition. And it was originally designed, original budget, so not much of a design, designed to support one floor. If we ever wanted to add on to Wassa West, that's about the only place we could add on there with additional floors, or one of the only, or the obvious place. It lines up perfect with the rest of second floor. It lines up perfect, actually, with the rest of the third floor. It would cost about 500,000 dollars, and this is one of those things where end user drives the design, the design gets a little bit more expensive. We added 500,000 dollars from the gray column to the light green column to build the structure, not to build a second or third floor, but to build the structure in order to support a second or a third floor, if ever, for whatever reason, we ever wanted to do that. It's not for action. Eventually, it will be, once it turns dark green. But I would love to get people's opinion on it tonight while we're building that design, because stopping right now with designing that structure would be much more beneficial than stopping it in two or three or five weeks when we're at 95%. Anything?
I was just going to add, you know, again, economy's a scale. It's a large project. We wanted to be up, you know, very transparent about this potential 500,000 dollar up upgrade, if you will. We will, obviously, as we continue to design, we'll have that in mind. And if there are opportunities to reduce and bring it back down to the original budget, we will continue to do that. But we wanted to be upfront with it right now before we brought you a final design budget. But yeah, I would agree. I would like to hear people's opinions on kind of future-proofing the design for Wassa West that was not part of the original plan.
I think when we, when we see things like this, it's almost always going to be something good, or it wouldn't be suggested. So that makes sense to me. The little extra spending at school forest, because we have a donor willing to spend more on top of that, that makes, so all these things are going to make sense. But we're still going to have to pick and choose which ones to do. One of the questions, or one of the bits of information that would be helpful would be, what's the contingency amount that would? I know we don't have a specific contingency amount for each project, but we have an overall amount. What was that, what would be built into that, so to speak, anyway?
The contingencies are built into each line up there. Here's the example to maybe look at. If you look at South Mountain. South Mountain originally was 4.873. Green was 4.873. Orange was 4.873. We just didn't get that lucky that all of them came in at exactly the dollar amount. We used only the contingency in that one that we needed to support that dollar amount going through. So technically, it came in under what the contingency included. So there's 10% contingency in each one of those. A secondary contingency is the 4.2 million in interest earnings, which is kind of a contingency. And fortunately, the interest earnings sometimes go along with inflation, where if you have high inflationary climate, sometimes you can recapture some of the dollars in interest. And by the way, the 4.2 million is only after offering 100 million dollars of bonds, another 20 million dollars of bonds to offer in another year. And then a third-level contingency, we did this for the 2015 referendum, we don't like doing it, but in the district-wide category, it's probably half and half technology furniture. So district-wide is half technology upgrades to classrooms, other than the new ones that are being built, because they're already budgeted. Technology upgrades to existing classrooms, furniture upgrades to existing classrooms. Could that ultimately be leveraged as a third-level contingency, especially if you were going to referendum again for elementary or going to... Because remember, last January, you asked me to build the debt structure for this one if we were to pass, to expect another referendum eventually and build in that opportunity. So if you were far enough down the road, you could think about maybe compromising that district-wide total and using it as another contingency. Be your decision to make, though, right? Your decision.
I think that's a good point. I think putting it on us is the way to go, so that we decide, okay, we do or we don't think planning West for the future is worth taking 500,000 dollars off that district-wide. You know, I mean, it doesn't happen exactly like that, but trending in that direction, I think that's a good idea.
Well, I think looking down the road is going to be the key. Having been involved with remodeling and building high schools in the last 20-some years, I know the fact that sometimes people can get short-sighted. I like the idea that you're looking down the road. Are there going to be other construction possibilities at West? Is there something we have to do before we can even talk about that? Because then, if we were to do what we're going to do without thinking down the road, it's going to cost us a lot more when we get down the road. And so I appreciate the fact, but these are the reasons why we're asking the questions. You know, do we continue to go down that road in that fashion? And we need to be aware of all of that. And it's not like we're trying to make your decisions administratively. We're trying to give guidance to you so that we can make a leveraged good decision when the time comes.
That's certainly appreciated. Thank you.
So my question about West End would be, so this wasn't in the original budget. What prompted the potential change? Like, was it demographics? Was it someone looking at enrollment, saying this is where the growth is going to be? I think we could understand the rationale would be...
Yeah, I think there's two pieces that contribute this. One is just, you know, the growth that we know is happening to the West. That's just in general, that would be one reason. Secondly, frankly, and you'll hear it later tonight, as you know, we're having this restructuring conversation. And we're going to talk about the possibility of merging the high schools. And if that happens, one possible scenario is that West could hold three full grades. And so the capacity of West would be maxed out, at the very least, if we were to go that route. So between those two possible scenarios, that's what prompted the recommendation.
I wanted to share that I'm sure Bob remembers I told him about doing this in February. But we have to, we have to decide what, you know, what that capacity is. But, you know, Bob and I had that conversation, so... I'm glad everybody else thought it was a cool idea, too.
Yeah, and we have to let the conversation progress a little bit. And, you know, now we're, you know, there's some opportunities in that area, so yeah, agreed.
Other questions? This is a Q and A for all...
Actually, Bob, how, like, how long do we have then, as a group, before you're going to get closer to the dark green? That it's going to matter whether we put the foundation in or not?
With West, we're at that point, right? We're at that point where the design is proceeding far enough along, where they need to know, are the structural engineers preparing for this building or that building? We said we'd bring it to you, and if there were resistance, we'd pretty much call them tomorrow and say, "Move forward with the heavier structure," so to speak. So we're at that point with West. Even though I don't think the West, the last one listed up there, the West 50%, I think it's scheduled to come after Christmas even. And the West 95% quite a while after that, so we still have a lot of work to do with West.
John Mear 50% is mid-December. And West hasn't started yet, so we got a ways.
So if we're talking specifically about Wassa West, it's probably better to know it sooner than later, because it's a lot more significant than just make the beam 10 inches instead of 8 inches. A second floor requires an elevator. A second floor requires laying out the first floor differently to enable the addition of the second floor. So if we get 50, 60% down the road and say, "Forget the second floor. We're not doing it. We're not going there." We just regressed months from a design standpoint. You know, the other possible scenario is to literally design two parallel paths, one that says, one that anticipates a second floor and one that doesn't. But again, there's a cost associated with duplication of effort and taking a design process down two parallel paths.
I could tell you that from my standpoint, if you were, and you can't right now, but if you were able to tell me this was the only thing changing in the West budget, I would say out of a 32.7 million dollar budget, if this is the only thing that's changing and it's preparing us for the future, I would be in favor of it. My opinion might change if you come back two months from now and say, "There's also 6 million more dollars of things that changed and went over." Now I might have to relook at it and say, "Well, maybe we can't afford to future-proof this thing." And we have to go back.
Did this budget allow for a second elevator? Now that you brought it up, are we replacing the other one? Or does capacity require us to have a second elevator?
Well, it has to do with access for handicap accessibility.
In that area.
In that area.
In that area, okay.
So the original budget way back when did not anticipate a second floor and all the things that a second floor creates.
So is the 500 just to do the structural elements, or does that include the elevator?
No elevator would be put in until we actually built the second floor, but we'd prepare the...
Make a tower for it and stuff, okay?
And 500 is a nice round number, and it's not round because we don't have that exact number yet. But at 95%, here's going to be my challenge, just thinking ahead, what we're going to bring to you in 95%. There are going to be pluses and minuses, right? That might end up at 32.7, right? We added 500 for more structure, but we saved 500 because we cut some square footage, and we added 300 for this, what we saved. So it's not going to be all just positives that ended up at 38 or whatever. It'll be a moving baseline that might end up back at 32.7. Wouldn't that be nice? We don't know. We do know that there's opportunities in larger projects like this, though.
For cutting back in different areas.
Yep, rearranging things and saving square footage. Exactly.
Even just the bid process. A lot more attractive project.
So it's a matter of if we give it a thumbs up now, wait until the 95% comes in. If at that point in time, the pluses outweigh the minus it, and we at that time say, "Forget it." Yeah, we have some sunk cost and some redesign fees. But, I mean, it's one way or the other, right? There's no in-between.
Then what comes off wouldn't have to necessarily be the heavier structure on the southwest corner. It might be something else that's about that same dollar amount, but we'll have to cross that bridge when we get to it. You were going to say something?
No, that was it.
Jeb better start having some bake sales over there.
What else?
Can I request a, like, we're paying Nexus a certain amount. Could you let us know what, you know, typically like architectural fee, right? And that's more or less what Nexus is getting based upon. I'm assuming the 119, but I don't want to assume, so I'd like to be, understand that more. And then Somerville is within their fee, or it's not within their fee. Those are things I'm curious about. And it's because Pat brought up about, you know, redesign. How would that be treated? Is that going to be additional over what the original fee was, so we can understand that?
Help me remember that. Anything else from us?
Any other questions or any directives that the board is contemplating individually?
I think I would just say that I agree, obviously, with what Pat and Lance are saying in that, you know, if there's many more pluses, it makes it difficult to give a thumbs up here. But without that information, I mean, I think in light of all that we know about the West growth, demographics, and the restructuring conversation that has been going on for a long time this summer and will more thoroughly tonight, I think it makes a lot of sense. Like, from my... Like, from my personal opinion, to make this a yes and a go-ahead because we want to be proactive and not have, you know, an incredibly higher dollar amount when we have to backtrack had we not planned accordingly to the growth. So that's just what I would add.
And concurring with that, change requests become very expensive. So we want to make sure that when we do move forward, we're not doing a lot of changing after that, because that can pile up and take a, a lot away from the contingency as we look at things going down the road. So, all right. If there are no other questions, let us continue to move on, all right? At the October Education Operations Committee meeting, Dr. Hiltz presented the proposed changes to the thirty-one dash two policy update from NEOL. We also have other things I think we want to talk about as well, but you want to take it from here?
I sure can, thank you.
Before we put a motion on the...
Yeah. So, yeah, we went, in, in October, we went through each policy. Board members had the opportunity to, you know, ask questions, make suggestions. We did have a, sorry, we did have that opportunity. So I guess tonight, we would just entertain any questions. Otherwise, I guess I would recommend we would, you know, pass these as a, as a full slate, pulling anything that any board member would be interested in exploring further.
Let me put the motion out there, and then we'll have a discussion. I'm seeking a motion to approve the attached NEOL policies as presented. So moved.
Second.
Okay. Discussion. Any comments from the board?
I just have, I guess, a question for clarification. Do we, do we have, I'll call it membership, or do we pay some kind of fee to use this, these guys to?
We do.
And then by going with their suggestions, we have some sort of legal protection? Is that right?
We don't change their suggestions.
Right.
And that's a key point.
Yes.
That's a key point. And we do have, they give us suggestions, and we can change or go differently than that, but as Lance pointed out, the coverage isn't there then. My comment would be this with policies. As we're looking, I don't want to be the grammar cop here, but I am going to state that I'd like to see our policies and administrative directives identifying antecedent pronoun correctiveness, and if we could get that in place, and as we see those things, the agreement has always been kind of close to my heart that we have those things. So I would say that the administrative team, once they identify, there needs to be some grammar checks and corrections, that we allow them to make those corrections because it would be the appropriate thing to do. Any discussion point from that?
No, it's, if it's not substantive, it doesn't require board action, so administration always has the authority to make, you know, grammar and typo and stuff like that. So if anybody sees something while they're reading through it, you don't need to have a board meeting or a board discussion. You can just let admin, administration know, and they can directly change those.
Absolutely, thank you.
Any other questions? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number five, we have a middle school update. Middle school principals, Dr. Gallagher and Dr. Phelps, will update the board on staff feedback related to grading and instructional practices, including the decision to continue with traditional report card grading.
Perfect intro.
Doctors, you have it.
Perfect. Thanks for having us. Last time we were here as middle school principals was in August, where we talked about a few things, middle school. One of those that there were a lot of questions and asked for more feedback on was standards based grading and our grading practices in the middle school. So we're here tonight to give you updates, specifically updates on a staff survey that we gave to our staff last month, and then also update with our next steps. But I think before we go into that stat, those staff survey results, we want to review why we went into this conversation in the first place. And those, we kind of mapped out in five different ways. We as middle school, and that's we as administration, our teachers, we want to focus on the most important standards. Second, we do want a similar experience at both of our middle schools, at John Muir and at Horace Mann. Third, we want to focus on skills, application, and engagement, and that keeps coming up as we talk to staff specifically about how we grade and how we report those. We want that focus on skills, application, engagement. We also want to work on the continued specific feedback for students, and then we want to make sure we're transparent in our reporting for students and families. So let's go into those survey results a little bit more with Dr. Gallagher.
So you'll see, one thing that you'll see is a lot of agreement in our staff, and I hope you had a chance to look at this ahead of time. So I won't go through all the details and all the numbers on here, but, you know, one thing that I think is important is the first one up there, all staff agree or somewhat agree with the idea that my grade level content department prioritizes standards in our classroom. That's the basis of what we do. You just got done talking about NEOL practices and how that's a good thing for the board to follow. Well, standards are that same kind of logical thing for us to follow on grounds, our educational practices and what's been proven around the state, around the country, et cetera. You also see on here, knowledge of standards is very high, above eighty-five percent that they use them on a daily basis to guide learning, et cetera. And a lot of agreement, if you can go to the next slide then, more agreement when we talk about things such as assessments based on learning targets, based upon what students all hear and everyone in the classroom understands are the most important things. You know, there's agreement in terms of John Muir and Horace Mann using the same summatives, using the same formative practices, high levels of agreement, things that we're very proud of, work that we've put in over the last few years, but we also recognize that there's still work to be done in some of these areas as well. And on the next slide, you'll see some other common agreements here, a hundred percent once again agree that the purpose of grading is to communicate to students and to families about student progress. I know from our conversation a couple of months ago that that was really important to the board, and we want to make sure that you understand that our staff has told us that that's what they see this as being as well. You asked for that kind of feedback from us, and we tried to get you that information. That's what a lot of this reports out and shows you, a, a great deal of agreement across the board. This also points out that eighty percent of our folks either agree or somewhat agree that families have a good understanding of classroom content and grading procedures, and you'll see that we plan to test that a little bit as well with some work that we plan to do in the coming months.
All right. So next, we asked our staff specifically, would, would you be prepared for standards based grading during the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four school year next year? Sixty-two percent of our staff said they would, would be prepared, but we also wanted to break that down by department on who believes they would be prepared and not. So you can see those numbers on that slide, that it is difference between departments. Some of our departments are, are ready, and some of those are, are not. And this helped drive our next question as well with, if given more time, or when given more time, where can we focus on our grading practices, our assessment practices, our engagement practices, application, feedback, all of those areas? And this feedback is going to be really important because as we move forward, where does our professional learning time, what does that focus on? What does that look like? And that differs per department. Last, we did have some comments as well.
So when you look at the comments, I think you can break it down into a couple of different key categories, if you need to go to one more slide. One of the biggest being not ready for various reasons, needing, needing more time, focus elsewhere, some feeling as though they did not agree with the process, et cetera. And then the other big idea that I think you see there is the restructuring discussion that is going to continue tonight and probably be very important in our near future. And some people thought that maybe it wasn't a good time for us to move in this direction given the fact that there might be some major changes coming our way. And so if you go to the final slide, the next steps that we propose is for, for two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four, we plan to keep things as they are. And why it says most departments up there is because our fire department currently uses a standards-based approach and has for many years and is very good about that, feels very effective in that regard. We continue to work with educational practices and identifies areas of need, working on professional development that Dr. Phelps just talked about. We do plan to get communication out to family and get some feedback in, in a survey very similar to what we gave our staff and try and find out where families feel, what their, what their thoughts are on our grading practices and where they think their knowledge is of that, to kind of verify, to see if our staff is correct in that they understand those things or if we have work to do there. And then, of course, to allow the restructuring conversation to continue because that's going to be very meaningful work.
I actually have a question about the AMONA work the teachers have with either of the systems. Is one easier for them, or, or are they equal?
Well, I'll start. I would say grading is, is a constant. My wife is a teacher. She's bringing home work all the time on weekends. I think most of our teachers do that. I was in the classroom for a very long time and did the same, many of you know that as well. So it's a constant process. The, the grading input happens maybe at more detailed times and specific times, and some of that can take a little bit of work, but I think there are ways to mitigate that. I think there are ways to figure out how to grade throughout the semester. So one does not necessarily have to be more, more intensive than the other, but there would certainly be a learning curve if we changed our approach and how we did this. There's no doubt about it.
Okay, thanks.
I'll say ditto, including my wife is a teacher as well.
Nope.
That's good old terminology, ditto. I appreciate that.
Yes.
Could you remind us, I think you mentioned physical education was already using the standards-based grading, but wasn't there another one? Was it math that's using it but transferring it then to a letter grade? Do I remember that right?
So there are a few of our departments standardized practices more that might do a one through four scale with a lot of their assessments, then transfer those grades. Sixth grade social studies at John Muir, many of our math teachers have been doing that for many years, but they do transfer that to a percentage grade and a letter grade at the end.
Okay, thanks. That, and that might explain some of the agree or somewhat agree percentages with regard to switching to standards-based grading if they're already doing it anyway.
When I was noticing ELA, obviously, they're hesitant, but they're willing to move forward. The thing that I noticed was that in English classes today, rubrics are used all the time. And so with those rubrics, if you're using a one to four, one to five rubric, and then giving them a base grade afterwards, they're already using a little bit of the standard-based.
Well, if I can add... I think I'm going to say what you were going to say, but you can, and after, but the English standards have come out fairly recently, within the last couple of years, and so they've been adapting and learning to implement that. So I think some of the concern or hesitancy might come from that, is that they are still getting used to the newer standards that have been introduced into the classrooms and adjusting rubrics accordingly, so.
That's what I was going to share. And if you look at what they want to work on, gets really more time together to develop those common assessments, I think, to make sure they're aligned. So they've spent a year learning the standards, they spent a year mapping kind of where our current work lines up with the standards and where it doesn't. And so this is the year to try to make adjustments in things like assessments. So between learning the new standards, adjusting curriculum, learning Canvas, they just would like a little more time.
Just a, a couple of things, Jim. So I'm, I'm glad to see that you don't plan on changes for twenty-three, twenty-four. I would also direct you to policy fifty-four, twenty-one, which is our grading policy, and states that revisions shall only be made when changes will assure a more valid, reliable, or clearer system of grading. In what we saw a few months ago, I, I saw nothing that was going to assure any one of those. So as you go forward, if you choose to go down this path again, please know that that would require board approval per this policy if you're going to make substantive changes to that grading system. That's it.
I think another item that you guys talked about when you were here is some of the time management with the students in the middle school and how much time is being spent in some classes versus others. And I don't know if you guys had any further conversations, but I guess I'd be curious, you know, as we go forward throughout the school year, if you guys have more conversations about that and whether or not any possible changes are being considered. Because obviously, student achievement, I think, is the ultimate goal here, whether through grading or time management, and especially learning that at that middle school level is very important for these kids. I have three middle schoolers right now, so they're learning time management, well, certainly my, my ones that are in sixth grade right now, so.
Yeah, one of the other things that we presented on when we were here in August was the middle school schedule time. So that's a good point on that one. We decided after that time and as a restructuring conversation took place to also move that back a little bit. We had a committee look at some certain schedules this summer, so we have, we have all that work in place to review those and, and move forward with some of those discussions in the near future.
I just want to thank you for coming and bringing this increased information for us. We did have a lot of questions last time, so I really appreciate that. I also really appreciate all of the next steps because I think they're all really great. I'm very sensitive to hearing from, from teachers who feel like there's so much change coming at them that it's hard to manage, and this, in light of the potential restructuring conversations and Canvas that was mentioned, curriculums that changed, you know, I think it's really great that we're just slowing it down a little bit, not going to make the change for next year, and making sure there's some increased communication to the families that will be having to be the ones who really understand this new process if that's, if that's the decision made. So just thank you for, for what you brought and for the, the next steps. I really appreciate those.
And you mentioned Canvas. Canvas was the number one, if given more time, when given more time, Canvas.
Right.
Our learning management system.
Right.
The other thing would be priorities, too. I mean, I recall the document that you had shared about reasons why families had left the district. There was a few things in there regarding middle schools. I think it more had to do with, with programming than anything.
Hands-on.
Yeah, exactly, hands-on stuff. I didn't see any reason in there that families were leaving because of our grading system. So hopefully, we can push some of these other initiatives ahead of things like this because obviously, your resources and time are limited, and I, I think we should be focusing on the things that are going to be more tangible for the district in the next three years, frankly.
Okay. Any others? Just make sure that we cover all the questions for the principals here, and if we have, we'll move on. Thank you very much. I appreciate that, and I'll have more questions, obviously, for you guys to find out a little bit more about how you feel about the standard-based grading. Yeah, there's a lot that goes into it. So, thank you. All right, continuing on. Item number six, the restructuring conversation from October Education Operations Committee meeting. Dr. Hiltz will share possible restructuring proposals and ask the board for direction related to draft district restructuring plans. With that, I'll save the motion, and I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I'm excited to have this conversation, and, and again, this is a conversation, right? This is, you know, the, the presentation, Cassie, you can pull that up. It was just a, a guide for us. We do have some guests that are going to speak with us tonight as well. So, yeah, let's get started. If you want to go to the next slide, Cassie, always start with our why, right? And this is about improving service to our students and our families. It's about improving work conditions for our staff. It's about addressing some of these ongoing and systemic concerns. You want to go to the next one? So tonight, we are going to, Diana and some others have created our second community video. We, we did put out the first, and we got some really helpful feedback from that. Once we do that, we will give you an update on that feedback. We want to revisit the subcommittee work, because that's going to be a jumping-off point for us if the board, again, selects to have us create some draft plans. We, if we go down that route, we want to have a, a shared vision about, if we're restructuring, what is it we're trying to accomplish? We do have some preliminary analysis, and then next steps, including a board motion. So I think at this time, are we prepared, ready for that video? This is the, the grand premiere of the second community video. Some of you might see yourselves in this, or people you know, so. Should we dim the lights? We should have brought popcorn. All right, so next time, we'll bring popcorn.
Hello, everyone. I'm Dr. Keith Hiltz, Superintendent of the Wassa School District.
And I'm Diana White, the Coordinator of Communications and Marketing here in the Wassa School District. The Wassa School District is a staple in this community. Strong public schools like ours lead to strong communities.
Every single day, we're doing incredible things, and with the help... And with the help of our staff, students are learning and growing and set up for success by the time they graduate.
While we're an amazing school district, we want to be even better. That's why we've identified some challenges, the ones that you heard about in our first video, like declining enrollment, differences in student access to programming, and differences in work experiences for staff that we want to fix.
So what's the solution? We've talked about possibly restructuring the Wausau School District, something that could open the door to so many possibilities for our students and staff.
Where every student has access to the same programs and where every student has a whole team of support behind them, ready to help when and if they need them.
Not to mention, the Wausau School District could be a place where our staff members have more equal work conditions, so they can be the best for themselves as well as their students.
And we know this is an emotional conversation to have. But as you'll hear now, there are staff members and parents who feel like now is the time to make a change for the good of everybody involved.
Opportunity, a word defined as a set of circumstances that make it possible to do something. The Wausau School District is full of opportunities. But because of the way we're structured, a child doesn't necessarily have access to the same opportunities, depending on which school they're in. And for Wausau School District graduate and parent Kelly Riddickel, that doesn't sit well.
I feel that at some point, we have to just reflect on the process, reflect on how we're doing things. And is it truly the best for our students here in Wausau? And if we can do things better, why not? You know, why not take the chance on our kids?
She's not the only one feeling that way. Wausau School District graduate, teacher, and parent Joe Stasich agrees. For 16 years, he split his time between Wausau East and Wausau West as an agriculture teacher. And he'll be the first to admit that was hard, both professionally...
By seven o'clock, there were West students trying to find me because they knew I was only there in the morning. And then the same thing, kids would be waiting for me when I arrived at Wausau East. So as a teacher, that doesn't give you a whole lot of wiggle room for prep and grading and getting things ready.
And personally.
I mean, we always want to have a focus on students first. And all good teachers in this district will stop what they're doing to help those kids. But it takes a toll on a teacher. I was way more stressed out. I had a lot less time. I spent a lot longer hours here in the building after school trying to get caught up. And now being at the one building has made a tremendous difference for not only my students and my kids, but my personal life and well-being also.
Like Riddickel, Stasich is an advocate for a restructure of this district.
I think our district wants to be as efficient as we can for not only our kids, our parents, our stakeholder groups, but also our community. Right now, we have to buy equipment for two shops, one at East, one at West. And we're buying the same equipment for two different places. That's not always the most efficient thing to be doing when we could focus on all the kids at one location. It would give us opportunities, use the same money that we have now, but have bigger, better, and give kids better experiences and career opportunities that they probably didn't even know existed.
Opportunities that go far beyond academics. The activities directors at both Wausau East and Wausau West are excited about the doors a restructure could open up to everyone, students, staff, and even the community. Opportunities that truly seem endless.
So not only could we fill all our levels at our current sports that we offer, but now we could offer extended offerings off of that. So for football, we could have all levels of football being offered on top of that with having an intramural program. So kids that still want to be involved with the sport. I also see it from a recreational standpoint. You see a lot of our culture changing more to that hiking, biking, kayaking. I would say more of the rec sport-type competitions. So we could open up that opportunity to single trek, mountain biking clubs.
A move they feel will truly elevate the Wausau School District to the next level, because by pooling resources for things like clubs and activities, the impact could be felt far beyond just our high schools.
I think it also gives us the opportunity to kind of spread some of those resources down. So we improve the opportunities and offerings at our middle school and get back where we used to have some of those opportunities in our elementary schools. One of the problems we have now is we don't have those opportunities at our elementary school, which forces our families to have to rely on those clubs to participate. And oftentimes, those clubs cost a lot of money. So some of our lower socioeconomic families don't have the opportunity to participate at those lower-grade levels.
Not to mention, we'd all unite in the process.
I would say we're better together. The more we combine and the more prosperous we can become, the more engaging and intriguing it is going to be to come to our city and to our school.
I think ultimately, we have to look at it from the lens of what's best for all students and not necessarily our own. And it's not about being selfish, but it's kind of about being selfless. Like, what can we do to make this the best opportunity for all of the families and all of our community members? And I think if you can step back from the lens of how it impacts you personally, or maybe impacts your children, and not a give and take, but a rise everybody up together, that would be my hope in doing this, is that this would make us not only a better school district, but a better overall community.
Because at the end of the day, this very conversation about restructuring is really about opportunities. The same opportunities for every single person in this district, and also creating even more opportunities in the process. Or as the definition says, a set of circumstances that make it possible for the Wausau School District to do something. And that something is to be the very best it can be for you, your children, and our community.
This is a great opportunity for us to think outside the box. And this is a time for us to kind of rally together as one community to embrace change, to move past how we've always done it, and to really focus on the outcome and what that could look like for our kids and our future, and to set them up for the best experience.
And here in the Wausau School District, we pride ourselves on making sure our students are set up for success well beyond the time that they're with us. But we can and we want to do better. But in order to do that, we have to knock down some barriers that exist because of the way that we're structured.
So we know you still have a lot of questions. And frankly, so do we. What does restructuring really look like? What schools are we talking about? What about transportation? What about class size? What about course offerings? All these questions have yet to be answered. Here's what we can tell you. We're going to do everything we can to improve your experience with the Wausau School District and make sure this district and the community have the brightest future possible.
Please continue to share your comments, questions, and concerns by scanning this QR code with your smartphone. We also have a direct link to the survey in the email if you need it. In the week of November 14th, watch for a whole webpage dedicated to this discussion at wassaschools.org with even more information and data than you could ever need. How we got to this point, the subcommittee's work over the summer, and thoughts going forward.
Then join us on Wednesday, November 16th, at 5:00 PM for an in-person session at Wausau West High School about this very topic. We'll also have another video in a couple of weeks where you hear from Executive Director of the Greater Wausau Chamber of Commerce about what this could do to grow the broader community and keeping students and families right here in Wausau. Again, thank you for taking the time to be informed about this topic. Thank you for tuning into this video. Take care, everybody.
Thank you. So I hope you see, you know, watching this here as valuable time. We want to, as people see it for the first time, we want to give as much context as possible. I don't know if people have questions or comments about that before we move on. Again, this is a conversation, so. All right, then we will keep going. All right. So let's talk a little bit about the state of conversation with staff and community. So we sent out the first video, got some feedback. Frankly, comments were all over, but nothing really unexpected, right? And we referenced them a little bit in the video. And also, shortly, you're going to be seeing the restructuring website that Diana created. And we took a lot of those questions and comments and put them into an FAQ that we'll go through as well. The most... Can you go ahead there? Thank you. The most common request really is to see a draft of a plan, right? So that's part of the reason that we're asking you for that direction tonight. This is the quantitative feedback from our families. We shared with them 13 possible outcomes from this restructuring process. We asked them, of these 13, which are most important to you? We had the same 13 to our staff. It's hard to read on here. You can look at it a little bit later. But two things about this. Do you want to go to the staff, Cassie? Thank you. The top five are the same. They're slightly different order, but our staff and our families agree on the top five. And I'll summarize those for you in a second. Before we do that, it's important to note also that while some of these maybe only had 40, 50, 60 responses to some segment of our staff or our community, everything on here was a top-five priority. So they're all important, but we can use these as prioritized outcomes to analyze any draft models. Do I go to the next one? These are the top five. Support students, give them better experiences, balance those staff work experiences, cost savings and efficiencies in those consistent class sizes. Those are the top five across both major groups of stakeholders. So that's good news. We don't have competing interests, right? So now, that's kind of where the conversation has gotten us to. That's our video. That's our conversation with the staff and the community. Excuse me. Before we asked the board to move this forward, we thought, let's go back and review the work of the subcommittee. Many of you were on those subcommittees, and so I hope you'll engage in this conversation as well. But I think to start is the next slide, the restructuring website. Diana, would you care to... Again, this is the first time, this has been opened as well. We've had it, she's been working on it for weeks, really months. And we, again, wanted to have some conversation, some context around this website. So Diana, you want to show them your work?
Absolutely. Thank you, Dr. Hiltz. And thank you, board, for this opportunity to be here and show you what we call the future of the Wausau School District webpage. And really, this is designed to be that hub of information that as the community learns about this, as they ask questions, everything they could possibly want to know, our goal is that it's here and that there are opportunities for their feedback. So from a very high level, and I won't take up too much time because I know we have a lot to get to, what I really wanted to do is focus on our why. Why is the reason that we're having this conversation, which is to improve our service? But also to educate them on the Wausau School District. As you've mentioned before, there are people in the community who do not realize we have 13 elementary schools and two middle schools, two high schools. So really wanted to make that very prominent. But also, as you see here, and Cassie, thank you for scrolling through this, the challenges we're facing. And to provide some data, I know that you've seen this graph before, you know, these hard trends that our enrollment is declining. So to speak to those things and talk about some of the inconsistencies we see when it comes to student access to programming, to the inconsistent staffing we have across our schools. So if you keep scrolling, Cassie, we go through those, but then provide some more information to help the people in the community understand why these are our challenges. And here, and what I felt was important to really highlight is that this conversation has been going on for some time, but certainly since the beginning of this year, and that when the referendum was planned, that work was intentionally pulled out to have this very conversation. And it's really a mixture of words, but then graphics. To know that not everybody has the time to go through and read every word, but just to provide some high-level graphics so they get the gist of the information as well. And then, one thing I want to point out here, again, to that point of when did we start talking about restructuring? It's important to highlight the subcommittee's work. We're so grateful to everybody who spent their summer with us to learn about these challenges, study the data. So as a subset page, I created everything somebody could want to know about the subcommittee. So if you click on that tab there, Cassie, in the upper right, just up a little bit more, yep, right there. And from a very high-level view, this page is, you know, what were the goals of the subcommittees? Who was on the subcommittees? And then here, every time that they met, if you click on one of those panels, you can actually take a look at the different meeting summaries. So high level, here's what was discussed. And then we also put the meeting presentation there as well. So this will be a great resource for those who really want to learn what was discussed in those subcommittee meetings. And then, if you scroll down just a little bit more, what's next? Where did they leave off? Just to reiterate for the community, they didn't make any decisions. They really wanted to pause to have a broader conversation with our staff and our families and the community. But they did point out that there were some plans that were worth further exploration. So that's what you see here and what you'll hear about more tonight. So I won't take up too much time there. And then just one more, two more things really that I want to point out on the original Future of the Wausau School District homepage, those FAQs. We have them listed here. And as this conversation happens, that list is going to grow, because there will be questions that come up over and over again that will be important to add. So those are there. And then just the opportunities for feedback. Those two in-person sessions we have coming up. And then at the bottom, there is a QR code as well that no matter the day, the hour, you can submit your questions, your concerns, and your thoughts with us. And we do read through every single one of those. So for the community listening and watching, please share your thoughts with us. And that's what I have.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Questions or suggestions on the website? Diana's worked on that a long time. It's... I know I've had some conversations with people. It's like, when did this conversation start? And where is all this information? It's like, this is, she says, it's going to be a really valuable resource. We hope people will use it.
And we'll continue to add to it.
Is there a quick link on here for some of the videos that you've created along the way?
Yes. Even the one that we just watched a short time ago will be added tomorrow morning. So that'll be there as well.
Thank you very much. All right. So progressing this conversation forward, you know, we've talked about challenges. Let's talk about the vision for these potential changes. Want to go forward? First of all, we are using, and I want to reiterate what Diana said about the subcommittee work. That was a lot of time, a lot of good thinking, very creative. We want to start where they ended and build forward from there. So if we take, and we'll talk about where they ended shortly. Part of the vision, if you go to the highest level possible, this is kind of what we would see. At our elementary schools, we want to build confident learners, build skills, academic skills, social skills. As they progress, as they mature, we want to continue that skill development. But now, we really want to focus on exploration. 16 different possible career pathways. We would like to expose students to all of those so they know what opportunities are available to them. We think if we created a junior high, we currently don't have one, but that's one of the scenarios that we're going to look at. If we created a junior high, we feel that is a unique opportunity to really inspire kids. If they've got their academic skills, if they're confident learners, if they've explored all that's available to them, now let's inspire them and help them create a plan to achieve what it is that they're hoping to do. And at that senior high level, let's make sure they're prepared for life after high school, as we've been talking about for the last couple of years. Have a plan. You know, what do you want to do? How are you going to get your training? How are you going to pay for it? What are some professional contacts? Really, that ACP, right? That redefining ready, those two in conjunction. So at its highest level, that's kind of the progressive vision for what we're trying to do. Create those spaces for kids and staff to thrive. Do I go ahead? So now, we'd like to talk more about these subcommittees. We've got a few subcommittee members here tonight. They'll talk about what they learned, things like that. You want to go to the next one? I'd like to start with the elementary. I'm going to give you a few slides, and then I'll invite Mrs. Schell up to kind of do an overview. Again, board members who are in those committees and you think there are pertinent points to add, please do so. Elementary, the elementary and the secondary, we have different visions. We talked about a little bit earlier. Number one is, we will be able to meet students' needs when they need it. We do a lot of that now, but we are hindered many times. So that's number one. Two, we will balance those staff experiences, right? We know they're differentiated across the district. We can do that. Also feel that we can offer some specialized support if we make these changes. One of the most, since I've gotten here, one of the most common requests from staff is, can we get some more hands on deck? If you've got an elementary teacher with 25, 26, 27 students, lots of different needs, can we somehow get them some specialized support where, you know, someone else, highly skilled, could work with a group of students who have unique needs, whether it's reading, math, GT? needs, whether it's reading, math, GT, EL, whatever it might be? Can we create kind of an academic support team similar to what we've done with the pupil services teams? If you recall, we had that referendum, we doubled the number of pupil services staff, the anecdotal feedback we get from the buildings is that has been a game changer for them, really changed their ability to succeed with students. So that's the overarching vision for what we're trying to accomplish with elementary restructuring. Oh, yeah. In the subcommittees, there were two proposals that were discussed. The first one was one that's familiar to people who've been following this conversation, that would be to close three elementary, merge them with others, right? Lincoln, Rib Mountain, Hewitt, Texas. We can certainly talk about why if people are interested. But as we had hoped, through that subcommittee process, another proposal emerged from parent members, saying, hey, we had some thoughts. And so they proposed closing five elementary schools with another unique twist of recreating our two 4K campuses. If you're not familiar right now, our 4Ks are embedded within our elementary schools. This would actually pull them out and create a freestanding 4K academy. So that's another option we will look at. Let me do a couple more slides before I ask Mrs. Schell to come up. This is the mechanics of how restructuring might be able to help us. And so, these are the five schools that were kind of discussed during the subcommittee, and so what we're looking at is, if the two schools that are together, in this case, for instance on the top, Hewitt, Texas, and Riverview, if they were merged, you see the current number of sections, the average class size, so Hewitt, Texas has six, average class size is sixteen, Riverview has eighteen sections, average class size is twenty-four. If you merge those, and these are, again, just rough numbers, a point in time, right? Lots of things could change here, but if you just did a straight, let's put them together and see what we get, there'd be twenty-four sections with an average class size of twenty-two. In this particular scenario, reassign teachers mean, if, you know, could we find some efficiencies, if you will, and take some of our highly-trained staff and reassign those into specialized support roles? In this case, we couldn't. We'll talk about that a little bit later, but just so you can understand the layout here. You continue down, Rib Mountain and South would result in eighteen sections, slightly higher class size, but there would be four teachers that could come out of that mix and be reassigned in support roles. I put an asterisk by twenty-four-four because that will get people's attention because it's higher than where we started. The nice thing about this is now we can have a conversation about, should we reassign another teacher to the classroom and drop that class size, or do we keep them in that specialized support role? Currently, we can't even have that conversation. Right now, everybody's in the classroom. Keep moving forward, there's Lincoln and Jones as an example, and you can see that results in two teachers. You wanna go to the next one, Cassie? Franklin and Hawthorne, you can read for yourselves, Grant and Ger- again, these are some scenarios. If we were to do these, with these current enrollments, that would be nine teachers that could be reassigned to those academic support teams. Let me go to the next slide, and we'll kind of flesh this whole thing out. So those examples only address teaching staff. This doesn't consider support staff that could be reassigned. This doesn't consider our principals. This doesn't consider other staff, custodial, nutritional staff. It doesn't take into account also our other certified staff. So for instance, in our district right now, we have three and a half GT teachers for the elementary schools, for thirteen schools. If we had ten schools, or eight schools, even our current allocation of GT teachers would be spread amongst a much smaller number, their time would be more concentrated, I don't know what the right word is right here, but they would be, their time would be more efficient and effective because they'd be able to, you know, meet with larger groups of students, you know, and do work in fewer numbers of schools. And that would be the same for the others that we have listed there. So the overarching question here is, how could concentrating our needs and our efforts enrich experiences in the district? I think there's one more slide before I, yeah, one more. So referring back to our desired outcomes, this tries to portray, if we were to do some of those elementary mergers, which of those outcomes could we likely achieve? So, and you know, it's hard to read, I should probably actually pull up my own because it's small for me and I have bad eyes. But, so for instance, the top one, address intangibles, that has a question mark, I don't know, right? That's, you know, the culture, the traditions, that would be something we would talk about later. But balancing staff experiences, absolutely. Community unity, sure, if there's more of us together, we're kind of breaking down those barriers, that would certainly be a potential outcome. Consistent class sizes, cost savings, we, you know, you heard some of it in the video, you can see a little bit of it here. Academic and behavior supports for all students, absolutely stronger. Academic and co-curricular experiences, yes. Improve academic, arts, and athletic facilities by focusing on one high school, nope, not in this scenario, right? But later you'll see, certainly that's an opportunity at the secondary. Staff collaboration, transportation plan is a question mark, we don't know yet, gotta pick a plan first. And then the last three, reduce the number of schools needing to be maintained, right size the district, and the possibility to expand that childcare, which we know is a, and before and after-school care, we know that's a very important conversation amongst our staff, our businesses, our broader community. If we were to have a school available, we could put a childcare center in there with one of our providers or create our own. So there's opportunities that get created. So I was glad when Diana chose the theme of opportunity in that video, I think that's exactly what we're trying to create. Before I ask Mrs. Schell to come up and speak, other questions? Or would you like to hear from her first? She's... Absolutely. All right. Julie, would you come up? And then we have, she will then introduce a couple of members of her subcommittee who are graciously willing to speak as well, and so we're anxious to hear from them. And again, board members, if you have things you want to add or question, this is a conversation. Hello, everybody, thank you.
Hi, welcome, and thank you for coming. Thank you for having us. Most of the summary of what occurred in the elementary subcommittee was covered in great fashion by Dr. Hilt and by Diana. So just in brief, the membership of the team, again, was central office staff, we had representatives from many of our schools, not all at all of the meetings, two principals, board membership as well, and we did have a WEA member who joined us and who was also obviously a teacher. One of the big things we covered in some of the initial meetings was capacity building and knowledge around what is AGR in Title I, and how does that funding impact our schools, and what's the difference in resources, or what does that funding do in terms of resources and supports for kids? So we spent a great deal of time on that. As mentioned, we went through a couple of the scenarios that have previously been proposed, just in the context of some of those challenges that we're facing, so we could see in terms of consistent staff, in terms of class sizes, as Dr. Hilt went through, you know, what would that look like in terms of some of those mergers or potential closures? So we went through those in the context of the seven challenges that we were really looking at throughout the summer. And in the end, we really didn't come up with any final conclusions, lots of questions, lots of questions answered. But we did have a great proposal, a third yet unrealized option, as Dr. Hilt mentioned, to come through from Margie Starr and Jean Schultz, who are representatives of both the Riverview and John Marshall PTO, and so...
Actually, we're both just from Riverview.
Both from Riverview, sorry. And I had down there, we had members from the John Marshall PTO, yes, who came up with a unique lens that we could put on, and it was previously mentioned, but they would just like to share a few details about the great work that they put into this unique opportunity. I'll slide this over and then you're good.
Okay, good evening. My name is Margie Starr. I was invited to participate in the elementary subcommittee because I'm a PTO officer at Riverview Elementary. I'm going to be speaking sort of broadly about my experience on the committee, and then Jean was really the architect of the idea we had. We definitely talked about it together, but I'll let her explain it. So I'm going to be honest with you, I was really nervous about participating in the restructuring conversation this summer due to its potentially really emotional nature. I am also from Wausau, I graduated from Wausa East, and I remember some really intense conversations in the nineties that were hard for this community. However, along with Jean, I decided that we needed to attend the meetings because they knew that our school community deserved to be represented, and I appreciated that the Wausau School District administrators invited PTO and community representatives from across the district to participate. Overall, I found the process in which we engaged to be productive, constructive, and informative. I'm gonna briefly list some of the most positive aspects of the experience from my perspective. First, I thought the meetings were intentionally planned and structured well. I think the administrators did a good job of articulating the challenges that we face as a district so that we had a common understanding of what we were looking to improve. Second, the questions that members of our committee generated were answered thoroughly and honestly by Wausau School District administrators. I personally gained a more comprehensive understanding this, more a comprehensive understanding this summer of topics including how elementary school schedules are built, AGR and Title I funding and how schools qualify for those entitlements, staff allocations, differences that exist in the elementary facilities, staff movement between buildings, partnerships with childcare providers for wraparound before and after-school care, and many others, but those were the ones that were sort of top of mind. I generally felt very satisfied with the thoroughness of the information that Julie Schall, Tabitha Gundrum, Bob Tess, and John Uding, and others were able to provide. Third, I thought the administration listened to us. A prime example of this is that we were initially charged with making a recommendation to you all by the end of the summer about what you should do. That charge made us incredibly uncomfortable. As Mrs. Schell mentioned, we had representatives from many elementary schools, but not all. That was uncomfortable. We didn't have many teacher voices, that was uncomfortable. So the administration listened to that and heard our concerns, and so instead of having to make that recommendation to you, we are now engaged in this process of providing greater information to the community and garnering input and support, which I think is a really important, it's important to call out that we felt listened to and heard. I also think it's important to note that we listen to each other on the committee and try to understand how different schools face different challenges. As we listen to one another, some new ideas that could help move the conversation forward began to emerge. And so that's where Jean comes in. This is, you used the word scenario, I think that's fair. I'm not sure I would say it's a proposal yet, I think it was an idea that we threw out there. I don't mean to get into the semantics of it, but, you know, there's a lot, there are bones here, but there's a lot that needs to be fleshed out. So I'm going to let Jean tell you more about it.
Sure. As Margie said, I'm Jean Schultz, I'm also a Riverview PTO board member. I have three children in the Wausau School District, a sixth grader at Horace Mann, a fourth grader at Riverview, and a four-year-old who actually attends full-time daycare. The third, or the second proposal up there that is up on the board, that was kind of our idea. I'm an accountant, so I look strictly at the numbers. I really didn't take into account any of the emotions in it. I was trying to take it from that strictly, look at the numbers, I tried to maintain a couple different kind of criteria, looking at the location and proximity between schools, maintaining all of the state and federal funding streams so we can maximize the revenues, but then also attempting to come up with an option where maybe we didn't have to go out for a major referendum. What could we do with what we have and think uniquely within the bones of the schools that we already have versus attempting to go out and, you know, kind of create something from new? So I basically knew the idea, you know, that Dr. Hilt's kind of, you know, proposed, close five schools, really be focusing on also then recreating two 4K campuses. There are some flaws in the data that was presented, simply because we were going with the numbers that we received from administration, there were some duplicated counts in there, but all in all, just kind of that idea.
We just didn't understand they were duplicated counts in the 4K.
Yeah, which is fine. When we presented this idea to the elementary subcommittee, one of the bigger questions that came up and concerns was that less than a decade, less than a decade ago, taxpayers voted to build these 4K academies at four elementary schools within the school district. The question was asked of me, how do we justify this change? To me, it's easy. Early, the early childhood landscape has significantly changed in the last decade. When my oldest, who is twelve, was born, I had no trouble finding her daycare. If I was unhappy with her daycare provider, I could switch her easily. All three of my children have always attended licensed group facilities within Marathon County. However, my youngest is four. He cannot attend Wausau School District 4K because his current daycare provider is outside of the Wausau School District boundaries. As multiple media outlets has, have presented in the last year, specifically over the summer, that over the past several years, Marathon County has lost more than half of its regulated childcare programs, resulting in half of the county being considered a childcare desert. Simply put, the demand for childcare great far outweighs the supply. We heard in our subcommittee that several Wausau School District teachers have resigned their positions because they cannot find childcare for their own children. This lack of childcare threatens both enrollment and staffing. As a full-time working parent, I can attest to the fact that having a 4K option with wraparound childcare would significantly improve the lives of many working families, and a convenient daycare for Wausau School District staff would help us attract and retain the outstanding teachers. Obviously, you know, in the proposal, you know, enrollments at all of the schools would increase, which is scary, you know, it's uncomfortable for people to see the overall increase, but there's some benefits to that. You know, you could have additional staff, like Dr. Hilt's, you know, addressed. We could have better educational and bonding experiences for those encore and specialist teachers. And then the financial savings that come from just maintaining fewer buildings. Our intention when we propose this, even though I'm an accountant and I hate spending money, is that we wouldn't just pocket those savings, but we would reinvest those dollars into getting students the services that they need and reinvesting those, all those savings within the district to just create better environments for our students. So, thank you.
Yeah, one other component that you, one of your premises was, in the scenario or idea that you've got here, the capacity of the schools, they could actually go together, full groups of students, full staffs, if you're, so that was very thoughtful as well.
Yeah, so that was actually one of the things that I maybe brought to the table, being a little bit more of the emotional side, was I liked that, so in proposal one listed there, if my memory is correct, so close Lincoln, but split those students between two different buildings. And in proposal two, close Lincoln and move those students, I believe, all to Jones. Is that correct? Yes. And so we were thinking about maintaining the relationships that staff have with one another and that students have with one another, and that just seemed like worth exploring.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much for sharing all of that. Do board members, you have anything to add or questions about the elementary subcommittee in particular?
Yeah, I would just say that I think the fact that there wasn't a full-out recommendation vote, like, you guys should do this plan, because I was on the committee, and I really felt like my role was to try to answer questions and then get information. And we, we just weren't in a position where you guys could have voted on a final plan. We didn't know what the secondary schools were gonna do, I mean, are the fifth graders staying in our buildings or moving out of our buildings, or what's happening? But I really felt like, as a board member, it was very useful just having it. So we discussed proposal number one, we discussed proposal number two, we discussed other proposals as well, and like, what's the good and what's the bad, and what are the concerns? And so it helped give me some information that people who haven't been living this for years are kind of addressing it for the first time, what are the things were coming up to them, and so I thought it was very useful for me, for this process.
Thank you. All right. Thank you so much.
Did the second proposal, does that involve pulling fifth grade out, or is this, this particular idea was just merging of schools, so?
Yes. And it was really more of an idea rather than a proposal. This isn't like, we didn't analyze this and then all vote on it, and it was, I think it was one of our last meetings as well, and so it wasn't like, like something that the committee studied and said, you know, here's... know, here's all the pluses and minuses. But we kind of did that with each, each thing, like, what if you close these schools? So that's how we started to come up with some things like, well, if you can combine a whole school into another school, that would be an advantage. Let's add that to our list of things that if we can do it, that would be good. Like, that's the kind of stuff that came out of those discussions.
I agree. And I'll say, we became, on the elementary committee, we became aware of the possibility of moving fifth grade out, sort of, of the elementary schools, sort of after Jean and I, Jean and I had discussed this. And you could do this, if fifth grade moves out, you could do the same thing and potentially retain 4K at those sites. However, that doesn't do much to address the childcare. And maybe, you know, that didn't raise as one of the top five, although as you mentioned, I bet it was number one among a particular subset. You know, so I mean, there are certain, there are definitely other ways that could go, but you know, hopefully it's food for thought, I guess.
I wasn't a part of this group, and I would say, it sounds like you really threw on a lot of different ideas. And that's what we, as a board, wanted, to have a lot of different ideas. Nobody here has the plan. And although there are a lot of people that would like to say, oh, you got a plan, we all have ideas. Now what we have to do is start putting those ideas together so we can make that decision that's going to be beneficial for all of our students at every level, all the way through 12th grade. So.
Yeah, thank you. One quick note, for people who are watching, the elementary subcommittee, you might be surprised to know that the elementary didn't always know what the secondary were doing. They met separately, and we just came together at a few opportunities to kind of cross-pollinate, if you will. And so the last meeting was the sharing of this idea, and they heard, it's like, oh, something at the secondary might impact fifth grade, which might impact middle schools. And so, and that's kind of where we stopped the conversation, said, we've got to bring more people into this. So that's, that's where we're at. So thank you so much for being a part of this. All right, let's move on to secondary. Cassie, if you can go forward. Right there, back up one. So again, slightly different vision for the secondary. In this case, number one on the list is equal access for students to our programs, right? We've heard about, you know, depending on which school you attend, you have access to some programs, or easier access, unfettered, if you will, access to programming. You also heard from Mr. Stasik about different work expectations or conditions for staff. We'd be excited about improved vertical alignment for our, for all of our students. And we believe there's opportunities to actually expand programming through efficiencies because we're not duplicating efforts. So we really see, if we're using our seven habits language, really kind of a win-win-win. Students win, families win, staff wins. Actually, it's four wins because taxpayers would win as well, better use of their resources. Move forward, one. So I think what you'll hear tonight is that, again, the committee explored a number of options. Dr. Rousher will come up shortly and a member of the subcommittee, but they support a change. Again, not certain what it might be, but certainly a change. Go for one more. I won't speak much to this. This was kind of the culminating slide, if you will, of the, of the secondary subcommittee, but you will, this lists some of the scenarios that were explored. And I'll let Dr. Rousher explain the key, the color key and the size of the, of the, of the different models. You want to go ahead, one more, Cassie? This is that same graphic. Now looking at it from a secondary merger lens. If we were to merge the high school into one on two campuses, these, again, are the benefits that we believe we could realize. Those that we couldn't would be, wouldn't it really expand childcare, because we're talking high schools? It wouldn't reduce the number of schools because we're proposing to keep, I'm not proposing, the idea is we would keep both buildings. Again, we don't know about the intangibles, we don't know about transportation, but virtually every other outcome that we're hoping for could be accomplished through a high school merger. Is that the last? Yes. Can you back up to that slide with the graphic? And I'd like to invite Dr. Rousher to come up. I believe Mr. Harold is here. Mr. Holdhueson was here but had to go to an event at Wausau West. So we're going to invite him to speak at the public event on Wednesday. So you'll have to represent, Paul. Yeah, you're welcome. Thanks for coming.
Good evening, everybody. Actually, can we order this slide that has the visual? There we go. So this, just so you know, this slide came up probably, I would say, maybe two-thirds of the way probably through our, our process as a secondary subcommittee. And we really started as a high school subcommittee. So I was involved, certainly some of our other administrators were involved, we had community members involved, and many of us on the subcommittee played multiple roles. So certainly here in my district role, but also a parent of students in the district. We had people like Paul who are representing kind of community, looking like from a business and industry lens, but again, also a parent in the district. So that was, that was the makeup. And I said, our focus initially was on high school. And so when we looked at some of the challenges and did a lot of education, we came up with our own list of desired outcomes just within our group, and you see those in the bottom right. And they're very similar to the ones that were ultimately identified by staff and by the community, trying to improve academic access and experience, also trying to improve the co-curricular access and experience. We wanted to maintain, if not improve, financial status. We wanted to make sure there was a viable transportation plan. And then we wanted to try to somehow address, or at least acknowledge, some of those intangibles that Dr. Hiltz had mentioned, things like identity and culture and tradition. So with those in mind, we did a lot of different brainstorming and really ended up with six different what-if scenarios. And I, as I've been listening to the other presentations, it's not really a proposal. I kept thinking in my head, no, we were just, we were saying, well, what if? What if we tried this? What if we did this? Would get it closer to the goal or take us farther away? So we started with kind of the obvious of, what if we do nothing? That was the status quo on the left there. And that got grayed out because as we learned about the challenges, it was pretty obvious that doing nothing wasn't a great idea. So then when we looked at the desired outcomes, we got kind of excited about the idea about one high school. And we asked that question, could we take all of our students in grades nine through 12 and put them in one building? And we had a little help from people like Nexus who have experience with our buildings physically, and they said, well, Wausau West has a larger capacity overall. Let's look at that. What would happen if we put all the ninth and 12th graders in one spot? And because they tried to be cooperative, they said, well, you could if, and there were a lot of ifs, ifs that involved huge renovations and possibly buying up houses and taking on additional space. And so as a team, so, well, that would check a lot of the boxes, but it's probably not realistic. So that got the bright red stop. Shift back the other day, other way, what if we just changed the boundaries? What if we just evened out enrollment across West and East? And if I remember right, that would have, we would have moved roughly 260-some students based on the numbers, enrollment numbers we had then. Okay, you're not going to be on the West side, you're going to go on the East side. Ultimately, that's not a long-term fix. That's an immediate fix, but you would probably have to redraw boundaries repeatedly, and that could be really disruptive to families and the community overall if growth continues on the West side. So that got the lighter red. And then that left us kind of in the middle of, well, we probably should look at some sort of combination. So how could we combine things? We could create a dual campus. There are some schools that have ninth and 10th graders in one spot, and 11th and 12th graders at another spot. We could look at that. We could create a junior high, senior high type approach, where maybe your eighth and ninth graders are in one building and your 10th through 12th graders are in another building. And then much like the elementary, after we thought we had all the scenarios, somebody on the committee said, well, wait a minute, what if? And it's actually Mark who had to leave. He said, well, what if we did an academy model? And instead of you pick your school based on your enrollment or your residence, you look at enrolling in this school if you're interested in this type of pathway, this kind of academy, you enroll in this school if you want this type of academy, and so on. So you can see we've got two greens and then the academy question. And one of the ideas with the academy was, well, could we take that approach of helping students identify a career pathway and really pursue it? Could we just tuck that into one of the green models? Could we make that part of a dual campus or a junior high, senior high? We thought, probably. So that's why that's tucked there in the question mark. And then when we came back to the, some of the desired outcomes and really fleshed things out, we saw more advantage to an eight-nine, 10-12 model in terms of things like student relationships and mentoring and leadership, but even just having the right courses in the right place if we went with the eight-nine, 10-12. And that's where we had to pause. Because as the elementary, now they were working down the hall from us, and they said, well, if we were talking high school, eighth grade is currently in our middle school. Now we're looking at something that might impact our middle schools. And if you, eighth grade were to come out of middle schools, then it raised questions about, well, do you bring fifth grade in? And I think our team fairly quickly said, we do not have all the people we need in this room. We don't have all the voices. And so that's where it came back again to the idea of, we should probably do something. These are some of the exciting ideas, and we need to now go out to the community and get more input. The community being staff and the larger community of families and students and so on. So that's what the visual represents.
Yeah, and I think it kind of summarizes much of the work that was done in the secondary subcommittee.
And it was probably at that point, too, that we said, can we get back together with our elementary colleagues who are doing the same type of work? And so that was a chance for them to hear what we had done and for us to hear what they were working on. And again, that's kind of where the summer ended.
Started.
Right.
So we, we got back to that business. So, yeah, thank you, Dr. Rousher.
So that, Paul, you want to share your perspective or things that were valuable to you as a parent and community member?
Just a quick perspective. As a parent of two graduates from Wausau West and two in elementary school at Rib Mountain, my perspective that I brought to the group was, was one of business community as well. I've worked with a local employer. Many of my coworkers are either parents or grandparents of students in the Wausau School District, and I tried to put that, that frame of reference on. Now, my initial conversation, my initial thought when the conversation came up was this is about efficiency, right? Fewer students, fewer schools, hey, this is, this is logical, right? That's not the case, especially with the, with the secondary group that I was part of. What I, what I saw was this is all about improving the experience for everyone in the district, from students to parents to staff and administration. Saw wonderful examples, immediately started talking about what additional things could we do? What additional offering? What additional sections? Or what kind of infrastructure could we have if we had just one senior high rather than splitting our, our limited resources among the two? And, you know, the discussion didn't stop there just on the educational side of it, but when you link to the, to the community, there are also opportunities when you've got that singular focus, right? As an employer, we're looking to engage with the schools all the time. We've got a finite amount of resources, much like the district, right? And if we're going to donate our time, our talent, and our treasure, we want to get the biggest return possible. And if you've got a singular, singular senior high or a singular junior high, the things that the business community could do could be substantial. And it could be, could be robotics lab, or it could be a robotics team, or a club, or donating our time to bring these principles to real life for our students. The other noneducational benefit that really stuck out with me when, when the groups got together is we're building on each other's ideas. And it did not score well in the overall priorities, but when I put my business hat on, the idea of utilizing space for childcare, whether it be before and after-school care or daycare for the community and for staff, that's, that's huge for our community if we could bundle this body of work with, with a community need like that. And, you know, as an employer, we're always looking to say, what can we provide that will draw people to us? And could this be a competitive advantage for the district if we offer these types of benefits for, for our staff and for our families? So excited by that. I think there are, there's, there's things to gain from these types of conversations. It's as evident, we've built on each other, these committees have built on each other's ideas. You know, the next step, and I think it's not a proposal, but the next step is to engage the broader community. And I think there's two sessions coming up. For those watching at home, I certainly hope people take the opportunity to attend and be heard. And that's not just parents, that's the community members as well. And I encourage the board to keep the conversation moving forward.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Go ahead.
I love your first item on here, and I heard this in one of the combined meetings, is that question of, should we do nothing? And that pretty quickly answers itself that no, we shouldn't do nothing. We have a lot of challenges in the district that have been described here tonight, and I, I talk about them all the time. It's the hard trends. We have declining enrollment. That's a function of people not having as many kids as they used to. And people aren't flocking to Wausau, you know, for various reasons and whatnot. So that's a hard trend that is going to be seen for the foreseeable, you know, future. Labor participation rate, all of us, every single employer in this entire community and around the country, frankly, is going to be dealing with labor participation challenges. And so I think answering that first question, and then with what Paul ended on, which is just some of the amazing and great things that can come out of all of this, like a possible daycare, like bringing class sizes to a more equitable size across the district. There's a lot of great things that can happen here through, through this restructuring and consolidation that we're talking about. So I appreciate the work that you guys have done and that the elementary committee have done to bring forward a lot of good, useful information to help everyone make a good decision, hopefully going forward.
Thank you. I think what we'll do is, Corey, you have, Corey, excuse me, do you have anything to ask or comment on?
I don't really have any questions. I was, I was involved, unfortunately, I can only make a couple of the meetings for the, for the high school. But what I liked about it was that it brought up questions that I think, you know, as a collective whole, all of these different ideas were, were brought to light that, you know, I think as an individual you don't think of. And it brought a lot of challenges. And like you had mentioned, you know, you didn't really realize until you heard someone else talk about, well, this specific need or this specific need. And I think, I think that this, this committee over the summer was just a phenomenal way to kind of brainstorm and come up with a bunch of great ideas. And all the work that was done, I think, was very valued and it brought a lot of issues to light. And I think that, you know, even though we don't have that proposal yet, we definitely are looking at some good solutions, I think, that will help the district in the long run. So that's all.
Karen?
Well, I was very involved in the secondary conversation, and it was incredibly valuable. I, I grew a ton from the beginning to the end in my knowledge of the challenges. I probably tended to be someone like, I'm having a great experience, what's the problem? And so it was really eye-opening. I mean, it was excellent to see a broader view of, of the experiences that others were having in, in different locations. And I think recognizing the opportunities that come with a potential change was also really exciting. I think it was really great to have people involved from the business community rather than just parents, because this is a decision that impacts the entire community. And hearing business individuals say, we want to invest our time and our, our financial resources, and so often we don't because there's two campuses. And to hear that from, you know, employers to say, this is why we haven't been able to move forward with some really exciting things that Wausau should be able to certainly provide, that to me, that benefits everyone. That benefits every student in the district. That benefits every member of the community. And it brings unity to the community. That is also really important. So I, I valued the time and I really learned a ton. And I think some, even the proposal from the elementary, or the idea from the elementary that, that rose to the surface that was brand new, I think those are the actual best outcomes from these exact forums and discussions that we had, is you get so many different engaged individuals in the process and the conversations. we had, is you get so many different engaged individuals in the process and the conversations bring ideas that, that are really important and really ultimately end in what is best moving forward. So I have just really appreciated the process and have really grown in my understanding of the needs and the status quo as not being an option, really. I feel strongly that way as well.
I had one quick thing for Pat real quick. Is that this, what you have laid out here is not some crazy idea in terms of grades being in certain classes or districts in our own county that have this exact same setup. So it's not, it's not outlandish. That's all I wanted to.
Good point. Very good point.
The, the progress is impressive on all of these, quite honestly. And the fact that we're here having this level of conversation in what I would say is a relatively short period of time, given how long, given how long these discussions have been swirling in this community. So I, I think this is great. Ton of hard work has obviously gone into, to all of this. The, the next step, and maybe the unfortunate step, is that even in my opinion, the harder work is yet to come. Because in any of the proposals and like any major project or major initiative, whether it's in this or, you know, in our, in our daily lives, those proposals have benefits. They have opportunities. At some point, we have to sign up for specifically, here's what those cost savings are going to be. Here's the number of additional classes we're going to be able to add and support. Here's the childcare option that we will offer. It's great to, and I, I think that the staffing one was a great example, starting to show, if you combine these schools, here's what the ratios will be. So bringing that level of specificity to all of those benefits, whatever they're going to be, and making sure that we collectively are signing off on that and that's what we're going to execute against, that's going to be the hard stuff. And I think that will determine ultimately whether or not this thing is going to fly.
If I can jump in, Pat, that was something too that I think through the secondary process, we learned fairly quickly. Initially, we had this idea of we'll brainstorm all these different options and then we'll research each one in detail and come up with all of that. And transportation alone, we learned, we, we couldn't come up with four different transportation plans. First of all, we didn't have the information, but even to go out and consult, to have, for student, for example, our bus company help us build that, they, it wasn't practical for them to build four plans. So that was also part of this, well, let's try to narrow it down to a couple somethings that maybe we could explore in that level of detail and then people could make better decisions on.
Go ahead.
On transportation, we had the same issue at, at the elementary committee, but even more so because many of the students that we'd be talking about haven't been born yet. So to try to, try to make a plan to address elementary students three or four years from now, you know, that just wasn't realistic. I don't have anything else regarding the secondary plan or, or committee. I was on the elementary committee. I have a couple of things on the actual, when we get to the motion part, but not on this, on secondary presentation.
Joanna?
I really liked the idea that we started bringing in the academy idea and, and just the whole thing. We've been talking about this since I got, first came on the board. And it's one of those things like Pat said, it's just rolling around in the community for years. And it's really nice to see that this group has gotten together and coming up with some ideas that now we can take to the public and embellish them and, and put together a plan that, that is accomplishable.
I think I'd just thank everybody that was on subcommittees to do all this work and take the time. We can talk to, you know, our small groups, families that we typically interact with and you're going to have completely different answers or solutions, right? Every time because of their elementary experience or, or whatever it is. And, and their students might be in sports and the other ones aren't in sports. So having, having two groups and, and go through all this and figure it out and have the business community, I guess really with the, kind of the daycare idea and, and how that could be an attractive benefit is, appreciate all that work. So we, at least some of us don't have to do quite as much that you've compiled it for us. Thank you.
It's been a lot of work and I think everybody would concur on the fact that we greatly appreciated the time that you put into it. My focus has always been on the students, taking a look at the triple A student, the academics, arts and athletics, you know, at the secondary level, all of my professional career. Bottom line is, we want to give them as many opportunities as possible. And with the 16 career clusters and the 72 pathways, we should be more in sync with our businesses. And that would give us an opportunity at the secondary level to do that. Because I think, Karen, you made that comment, you have two schools that we're supporting. And the redundancies from the, the community's point of view, we can be economically wiser. And that's what we need to be looking at. Academics and economics. If we can go forward on that and really build, it would be a great, a great situation for Wausau. With that.
Thank you very much. Um, yeah, thank you pretty much for, for sharing all that. I just want to, along the subcommittee level, I, you, you've, you've referenced it. There was so much positive energy, you know, when people started talking about what ifs and possibilities and it was very exciting. And I'm, I'm looking forward to recreating that now with a, with a broader community. So before we go further, I, I would like to have the board, if you're interested in pursuing this, you know, take some action. And then I would just summarize tonight with a, a few next steps and one cautionary tale. But I guess I, I would ask the board first, is, is this a direction you want to go as far as that motion? Would you, would you like us to develop draft plans? Real, like, we want to, we're interested in doing this, we're interested in pursuing this, please create some draft plans and we would start doing that work immediately.
Well, some of the top, the topics have been covered. The talk has taken place. I think right now, putting a motion forward is what we need to do. So I'm seeking a motion to direct the administration to develop draft plans to restructure the Wausau School District. So move. Second. Okay. Any questions?
Yeah, I, I have one, one request and one question. The request is for the proposal on the elementary side. One of the big concerns that we've heard for years and most recently is class size.
Yeah.
And one of the things we know for sure is, we're going to have more consistent class sizes. We won't have as many small ones, won't have as many big ones, have more consistent. It would go a long way if we could even take the additional step and say, we're going to, we can now even afford to change some of our board set class size guidelines. And what I'm thinking about is, as of right now, our board guideline from grade three to four jumps up. If, for example, we did the junior high, senior high model, these are lots of ifs, and if that meant fifth graders coming out, now you have a school that's K4. Could we then say, well, no longer does fourth grade jump up, fourth grade stays the same size as third grade? And could we even take that a step farther and say that in our low income schools, our AGR schools, that we even go lower for fourth grade than we do in our other schools? Because for those who don't know, in our AGR schools, K through three is protected in size. Fourth grade is not. It's the same exact kids, only one year older, and it's a huge change to go from an AGR class of 18 to 25. Same kids. And so, and maybe we can't, but, so that's my one request, is that explore that as part of the plan. Because if that could be part of the plan, I think that goes a long way towards supporting elementary consolidation. Or if we could have some of those lower income schools have smaller fourth grades and then with our other ones as well, I think that'd be great. And then the question I have is, when you say that you're going to bring plans back to us, is, could you, I'm going to vote in favor anyway, but could you tell us kind of what your, what you mean by that? Because what I, what I hope doesn't happen is that a group of people spends 100 hours developing the plan that they have hammered out to be the perfect plan and then it comes here. And then we pick it apart and the community hears about it for the first time and they pick it apart and they talk to us and it changes 10 times. And I just don't want people to feel like they're wasting their time or that we're insulting them if we, you know, pick it apart like we do when stuff gets brought to us.
Not that you'd ever do that. We do do that. It's true.
Couple of really good points. Talk about class size, if you don't mind. We, I hope, I know it's getting late, I hope you don't mind we keep talking about this. Very excited. So one thing that we shared with our, our principal, our admin team last week about class size at the elementary, is that right now, when we, when we plan our staff for next year, which will start soon frankly, we, we look at our enrollment numbers, we take the best guess where we can, what it's going to be, and we schedule pretty tight because we have to. And one thing that happens is, so let's say we have 27 students and, in two class, 27 students in each classroom at a certain grade level in a certain school. And over the summer, we get a bunch of kids that move into that enrollment area in that same grade level and we max out our board-approved class limit. We have no place for those children in that school in that grade level and we end up district placing students who live in an attendance area, but they can't attend their neighborhood school. We have to either transport them or ask the parent to transport them to a neighboring elementary school. We have about 60 students that meet that criteria and 60 students who can't, you know, attend their own neighborhood school. And, and that's again, that's part of our, that's a structural issue. It's bothered me since the day I got here. I don't have a good solution, except this. If we had fewer elementary schools, we really wouldn't have the option to district place. We would have to staff, we would have to staff, I'm going to use the word more generously. Maybe we couldn't go over 23 or 24. We'd have to leave room for students to, to transfer in. So just structurally, we would be almost forced, in a good way, to, to schedule in a more generous way. Your idea about, you know, maintaining fourth grade, I think it's 25, I think in 18 and AGR?
Third goes 23 with a cap of 27, fourth grade goes 25 with a cap of 29.
Yeah.
Doesn't sound like a lot, but it, it, it ends up.
Yeah.
It ends up.
And, and again, kind of like the, the conversation I mentioned earlier, at least we can, we can entertain that conversation. What are our priorities? Is it smaller class sizes or is it support teachers, right? And at least we can have that, we'd have the opportunity to have that conversation. So certainly, we could explore the impact of that. Your second idea, I, I agree. We want to put out some proposals or ideas or scenarios for feedback before we start putting in hundreds of hours. You know, I think Mr. McKee, you talked, I mean, we're going to have to have, you know, what's the, we, we've already started talking about like, if we did something like this, what does a 512-aligned curriculum look like when you're combining two high schools? Don't know. And we've been, been reaching out to other school districts. We talked to South here, Sun Prairie, who, they're expanding. We said, did you make curricular changes? No one has merged recently. So that's going to be a whole, that's going to be a very interesting puzzle for Dr. Rousher and her team to solve. And we've already had that conversation. But there's also excitement associated with it. It's not like it's a foreboding challenge, it's really, there's excitement around it. So yes, we would bring a few rough drafts with just a little bit of thought, kind of like a concept, get reactions. We would probably reach out and have the subcommittees reconvene. They've got some really good expertise. We'd like to take advantage of that. We would expand those groups to, to some extent. So yes, that would be kind of the next steps if the board wishes us to go that direction.
So as Lance has put some extras out there in the guidance of what we would like to see, does anybody have anything else that they would have at the tip of their tongue?
So I've had parents reach out with concern of transportation. So if, if that could be, or maybe a roadmap of how it would look, if any of these ideas would take place, because that's a big one for many parents, is the transportation.
Yep, it is. And, and again, until we, until we kind of narrow down our options, we won't have great answers.
Yeah.
But it is, it is right there in front of us as, as a challenge. Agreed. Thank you.
Anything else? No? Okay. With that, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Can I have five more minutes to wrap this up? I know this is really important, I know it's getting late. So, thank you. So now we have, we have board direction. We've got those two in-person sessions. We have several PTOs who have either, we've, we've sent invitations to them. We were first invited by Riverview, no surprise. Thank you for taking the lead on that. And we thought, that's a great idea. So we've got, and I will send those out to you. Any board member that wants to join me, be happy to have you. It's going to be a really good conversation. And we will draft some plans, do some quick analysis. Next slide. Just so you know, again, kind of consistent with what Mr. McKee said, this is kind of the process we'll use. We'll do a needs assessment, we've really kind of done that. But we have to analyze our risks, right? What if we engage in this process? What if we don't? What are the risks associated with that? We've designed our success criteria, all those, there's more that we could add to it. Cost-benefit analysis, lots of ways we could look at that. And then we'll kind of do a best fit, right? So that's the, the rough and dirty analysis process. One more slide. Oh, I do want to take a budget, I, I want to be real transparent with, with people. This is all predicated on the idea that we have adequate funds to make this happen. And I just want to be cautionary. I, I'm going to, this is information that several of us who attended our, our Regional Wisconsin Association of School Board meeting, they shared this. And I thought, it's the same information that Mr. Tess has shared with us for quite a while, just a different view and kind of corroborating what he's, what he has shared. Wisconsin used to kind of lead the nation in, in, in public school education. We've really dropped below the average now. In 2020, we were number 25. If I remember correctly, right now we're number 28. So we've just gone through two, two years without a revenue limit increase. And the Blue Ribbon Commission, which I had forgotten, it was led by Robin Voss, who if you know, he's well-known in political circles. Their number one recommendation was, let's employ, you know, let's have our revenue limits, but let's raise that revenue limit each year to meet CPI. That hasn't happened. It's just, and it's not a political statement, it's just a fact. If you go to the next slide, Cassie, I thought this was really enlightening. So going back to '08, the, the red and the, the, sorry, the green and the blue are, are kind of revenue limits, investments. The red is the cumulative effect of, of funding public education under the CPI. So it builds, obviously. If you, if you fast forward to this year, according to the projections here, $3,160 per pupil, that's where if we had maintained our revenue limit just to CPI, just to pay for what we were doing back in '08, '09, that's what would be required. For Wausau School District, if I do my math correctly, Bob, correct me, roughly $25 million would be on our, top of our revenue limit if, if we just kept up with spending. So if we do this change and we don't have funding, you know, revenue limit increase to, to continue to fund what we're doing, what this really would do is allow us to maintain our status quo. If we don't get adequate funding in the next few years, we'll be forced to do this anyway. And, and we don't want to do it that, we always want to be proactive. So I just want to be, you know, very transparent and, and not promise things that we can't deliver. So, so I just want to make sure people are aware that this is predicated on, on the legislative funding. Questions or comments about that? I know it's not a popular topic.
Well, I think it, it's important what you just said, that we will have to do the restructure. If we don't do anything now because of our, or the money that we're getting, we're going to eventually have to restructure our schools.
Between this and declining enrollments, for sure.
So eventually, we're going to have to restructure anyway. If we don't, I mean, we're, we're doing it right now, we're doing it ahead and we're planning it out instead of being in a situation where we have to do it.
Yeah, thank you. One last slide, I think, and then I'll, so just a timeline. If, if we're able to come up with a decision this winter again, then the hundreds of hours, thousands of hours, people hours have to go into the actual plan. The earliest this would happen would be 2024. I think that's the last slide, right? And it goes to questions? Thank you. So I'm sorry, does somebody have something? Thank you all very much. Thank you all very much.
I think we've already done the motion and the voting. Moving on to Agenda Number 10. We're going to take a look at Alpine Ski Co-op.
Making snow today.
Yes, yes, it did. Yes, they did and Mother Nature did too. At the October Education Operations Committee meeting, Dr. Jennifer Rousher presented the recommendation to improve the Alpine Ski Co-op, including Wausau East, Wausau West, DC Everest, so that Wausau students can continue to participate in this successful club team. Anything else to add to that, Ms. Rousher?
Nothing.
Okay, thank you, Doctor. With that, I'm seeking a motion to approve the Alpine Ski Co-op, including Wausau East, Wausau West and DC Everest for '22, '24.
So moved.
Any questions? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on, Wausau East graduation date requested action. At the October Education Operations Committee meeting, Ms. Diana White presented a proposed change to the calendar for the Wausau East graduation. Anything else to add? Nothing else? I will, I'm seeking a motion to recommend to the full board the approval of the change to the Wausau East graduation date as presented.
So move.
Second.
Any questions? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 11, anyone with professional growth development report that they'd like to add today?
I do. I attended the Legislative Advocacy Workshop last, last week and I was really impressed in what came out tonight, just a few minutes ago, about the state budget is incredibly, incredibly important. And one of the things that they talked about was, was not only things that the school district could do to involve legislators in things like the, literally the material that we just talked about in terms of our direction as the district, but also how important it was for each of us as board members to have a plan and be able to know who, who to contact, whether it be the legislator or staff member, have and develop relationships. And the timing is extremely important right now, particularly because between now and January, what's going to happen is there's going to be some, some things that are going to be taking place. But we're going to get the, an assembly in a senate that is going to be largely coming from a Republican base. And there's been a lot of discussion back and forth between the governor and the, and Robin Voss. And in fact, one of the things I was going to list, point out in the legislative report, is that Robin Voss has now indicated to the governor that he would be, he would be willing to boost education funding if the governor would be willing to look at universal school choice. These are things that are happening behind the scene now. But then, starting in January, then we're going to go into a biennium where there's going to be a period of time where the legislature is just going to be focused on the budget, things that Bob would love to have support on at the legislative level. If we have relationships with legislators and can tell our story to them, we may have some impact at the beginning stages because then after that, then they will start putting bills forward. Then they'll start move from one house to the other. And if we just are reacting at the end of the next legislative session, all we're going to be doing is trying to put out fires. So the workshop was incredibly good. You can still watch it online if you would like. And the information is just absolutely essential. The other thing that I became very aware of is that this board has had, by, by appointment, a legislative liaison. To me, a liaison means somebody that goes both ways and works closely with or has the opportunity to work closely between administration, the board and the legislature. All this position has ever been, as long as I've been on the board, is a report about some things that may be happening. We've not taken positions on things. We've not given tools to personally follow with our legislators and be advocates for the exact things that we're just talking about in terms of what's happening with revenue limits. And it's incredibly important issues. And so one of the other things that I really think is important is to refine a job description for the position that I'm in as, as a liaison and terms of finding out ways to, to direct and guide those relationships. So this becomes more of a tangible, hands-on thing where there's a cooperation between our board, our administration and the legislatures. And we can do things to tell local stories, to influence legislators, to take the kind of action that we need to have taken. It was a great workshop. I hope you all watch it.
Well, that gives us an opportunity to be the leaders in central Wisconsin as we move forward. And we always have claimed that we are the leaders. So, Mr. Webster, do you have anything else?
I do.
Okay.
There were a couple of things.
Now, this is the legislative liaison here.
Yes. There was a good support for school referendums on November 8th. 79% of them passed. However, the ones, many of them that didn't pass were operational referendums that directly impact our school districts right around us. Merrill, Athens, I think Stratford and some others had operational referendums that did not pass. We were fortunate that we didn't have to do that because of the wonderful work that this board has done with the under direction of Bob. But some of, some of those referendums are going to be really painful for some of the districts that are surrounding us. Robin Voss, I just mentioned that. The GOP legislative majority leaders were also elected and Robin Voss is continuing his position. But the Senate has Devin LeMahieu, and I think,